And we're live.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting for October 21st, 2020. As we're online, I'll begin with the roll call of board members for attendance. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford. Think she's on her way. We'll catch her later. Liam McGovern.
Here.
Rip Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verdi.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. We have Linda Guthrie, our note taker and staff, Andy Port and Caitlin. Sullivan.
Bonnie, it's Linda. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could Tanya just announce herself? When she shows up, my document covers part of the screen.
Well, somebody will have to look for her. I'll try to remember to do that. But yes.
Okay, great.
So we'll go through the agenda first. We have one public hearing, the Institution for Savings, Site Plan Review, ITIF Special Permit and DoD Special Permit, Continued several times, most recently since August 5th. Then we have, under Other Business, 177 State Street and Minor Site Plan Review. We have approval of the minutes from our last meeting. We have potential zoning amendments, specifically our draft report on short-term rentals to be approved and submitted to City Council. And then other updates, one of which is a discussion of public comment emails to board members, which Andy Port has recommended we discuss. So that's our agenda for the evening. As with the beginning of all of our online meetings, I just want to remind everybody who's listening in that materials are available on the website. You can access them by going to the web, city website and under Government, click on Planning Board, where you can see the link to the agenda for tonight's meeting. There you'll find a link to each application on the agenda and all the supporting materials. And note that the most recent materials are at the bottom of any that are, have multiple documents listed. That being said, Andy Port, Director of Planning, will be pulling up relevant documents as we go through each application. We'll start with the public hearing for the Institution for Savings. I'll review the process we're going to go through. It's nothing new, but in case there's anybody who hasn't sat in on any of the previous public hearings on this application, I'll remind you of what we're going to do. There'll be a, an applicant presentation, limited to 20 minutes. Then there will, will take public comment. And then we'll allow the applicant to respond to the public comments. After that, the planning board will make their comments, and that will be more of a give and take with the applicant to have somewhat of a dialogue. And at the end of that part of the application review, we will talk about next steps. Let's begin with the applicant presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Mead, me Talia Acosta, on behalf of the Institution for Savings for the 93 State Street application. With me this evening, Madam Chair is Mike Jones, the CEO, Kim Brock, the COO, Christopher Angelakis and Shreya Shaw, who are the architects. Will be doing the presentation. Also available this evening for questions from the board are Charlie Ware, Nick Betts of Meridian Associates, the engineers, Ron Mueller, Mueller Associates, the traffic engineer, Sean Fitch of City Lifts and Dr. Judith Selwyn as well. Tonight, we're here to do a, I'm going to do a broad overview of what has occurred since we last met, then I'm going to turn it over to Krista, Christopher and Shreya to review the details of the building. And as I said, all of our technical consultants are available to answer questions from the board, but we don't believe at this time it's necessary to reiterate how we meet all the special permit criteria and site plan and review criteria, as that is all on the record currently. And we believe the architectural changes do not discount, rather they enhance our compliance with that criteria. Certainly, they're here to answer questions from the board, however, as the board requires. So as you know, this proposal is in addition to the rear of the property. It's a, the proposal is to attach the addition to the 1980 addition, which is behind the 1871 addition. The proposed new addition is approximately 150 feet away from the front of the 1871 structure and over 80 feet from the rear of it and over 188 feet from State Street, nearly two-thirds of a football field. And if you could go to slide three, please. When we presented our plans, we had presented revised concept plans in August to the board. After that, the bank and the architect and its team of engineers and subcontractors moved to see if actually the concept plan would work in reality and meet the actual needs and mechanical aspects of the bank. The new design is requested by the Historic Commission and Planning Board reflects the neighborhood setting of Prospect Street and Otis Place rather than State Street. The buildings are wood clad and include pitched roofs and gable ends reflective of the residential end of the property. As requested by members of the Historic Commission, as well as the planning board, the applicant has reduced the eve line that runs along Prospect Street. You might recall the original eve line prior to the August design was 29 feet, eight inches. It has since dropped. In the August design, it was over, a little over 26. The new eve height is 25 feet. For a relationship, the eve height of the buildings from 11 to 21 Prospect Street are just over a foot lower than that at 23,9. The bank has also revised the section of the building on the corner of Prospect and Otis to include the design elements for the remainder of the building, which Christopher and Shreya will review with you. Additionally, there are several doorways, reminiscence residential doorways and several items included like a chimney with an interior fireplace that's working in the building. I should point out importantly that the generator, which used to be exterior to the building, is now fully with enclosed within the building. So I'm going to briefly review the changes to the site plan, which I think are really important. And if you have questions, technical questions later, you can ask Charlie or Nick. I think perhaps the biggest change that you can see on this plan in front of you is that there is the removal of the additional curb cut and egress out onto Prospect Street. You'll see that there is only one entrance and exit from the new structure for vehicles, and that is into the bank parking lot. Andy, if you could just go right over the entrance to the building, to the parking area in the building, you might want to put your cursor on that in the middle of the plan. So importantly, thank you. Importantly, there's, the only way to get in and out of this building is from the bank parking lot through a vehicle, and you cannot now go out onto Otis or Prospect Street. In order to accomplish this and allow for enough space for an additional lane of traffic, the island at the drive-through location was moved slightly and made a little bit smaller. So you can see the dotted line about where Andy's cursor is in the middle, and that is the new island. And underneath that, you can see in the light gray where the old island was. These changes result in slightly more impervious area on site, which needed to be accommodated by the change in the stormwater system. These changes have been reviewed and approved by the board's peer review engineer, Phil Christensen. The board should have Phil's letter. I think it does. Additionally, the changes in design have been reviewed and approved by the fire department. Those are the only changes in actually the site plan. You can see the circulation now. There is an interior lane that goes around that allows traffic to come in and out, and then those lining up or queuing to the teller is also in the outside lane. And if you could go to slide eight. Slide eight is the photometric plan. And the lighting remains what it is today on the prospect side of the building. You'll see that all of those lights are existing. Those aren't going to change. The only additional light, which was proposed at the last time, but I'll show it again on here, is the light, the wall-mounted lights along the sidewalk in the rear of the building that are located on the walls at four feet and shine down onto the sidewalk. We believe the Institution for Savings has met the criteria of the DoD for new construction in that the proposed addition remains compatible with the historic character and scale of the subject historic building, structure or architectural feature, its lot and setting within the DoD as the case may be. As before, the proposed addition and its distance from the 1870 building and its lower height from the existing structure certainly does not diminish or in any way take away from the prominence of the original structure. Indeed, as noted by several members of the Historic Commission in this board, the proposal is as if it were a separate building. The planning board can find that the proposed addition meets the standards under Section 27 F5C, that it is, the, the DoD may reflect nonhistoric styles for new construction so long as they remain compatible with the historic character and scale of the subject historic building, structure or accessory architectural feature and its lot and its setting within the DoD as the case may be. As mentioned by Mr. Walters at the last meeting, the guidelines for the interpretation, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for New Additions discuss the massing and scale in relation to the historic structure is defined by its visual relationship. Here, given the location on the lot of the proposed addition, the historic structure is not visually impacted by the new construction. The proposed renovation provides the appropriate design to reflect the residential neighborhood, but does not copy it. The design is not required to be a replica of its setting, rather be compatible with it. The new design accomplishes this task. Importantly, consideration must be given to all of the foregoing, but one may not discount the commercial district within which the property is located and the building exists. Finally, the changes which the applicant has made are consistent with the response to the site plan and review criteria and performance standards and the special permit criteria as previously put into the record, and therefore, unless specifically asked, we will not reiterate them at this time. So now I'd like to turn this over to Christopher. And so Andy, if you could go to slide nine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be speaking to all of you again. Last time we spoke in August was to discuss a concept here in which we were very much taking into account a lot of the comments that we heard both publicly and by the board. Here to really look at, instead of having a commercial building reflect the State Street architecture of commercial buildings that we really needed to start with the neighborhood and work backwards from there. And we're going to start with the plan here, just to point out a couple of the features. Lisa did mention them, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth showing a number of them. Andy, if you wouldn't mind jumping back one slide, I'd like to start on the ground floor. And again, very quickly to reiterate, there's one entry to the garage. Now, there is no other curb cut on Prospect Street. What that allowed us to do was really actually put people occupied space on Prospect Street, which does a number of things. It keeps the street edge lively. The, the windows there are actually windows looking into occupied space. It is a acoustic buffer to anything going on down here in the parking garage. And it's a visual buffer. So at no point will anyone on Prospect or Otis Place be able to look into any window and see a car. That's, the garage is, is being shielded both acoustically and visually. The other thing to point out here that Lisa mentioned, but is worth pointing out in plan, is the internalization of the generator. This generator is now inside the building, inside of an acoustic closure. There are no louvers or openings to this enclosure at all. All of the venting in makeup air is being dealt with through the roof, which is two stories up. So the amount of acoustic separation that this generator has would be at the highest possible standard. We can go to the next plan. Thank you. And the upper plan is, again, is a, is a, is a representation in response to the breaking down of the massing of this building. The, the plan actually steps back in a number of key locations to, to, in, to break down the massing of the building, which we'll see in the next image, was really the thrusting goal of this redesign. And I think there's nothing particularly expressive to mention about this plan. I think it makes more sense when you look at the massing on, on slide 10. And the building itself gets broken down into a number of different components. And our approach to this, to this particular design was that no matter where you see this building from, no matter what street you're standing on, either Otis Place or Prospect, Garden or State, this building would and should look like at least three, if not four, separate masses, four separate buildings. And each one of those masses being broken down into a, a, a mass that is no bigger and in some cases smaller than adjacent buildings in the neighborhood. The architectural style clearly starts to pick up cues from the existing buildings in, in the neighborhood. So in a way, this building starts to, starts to blend in in that way. We wanted to show this first before we got to the elevation drawings, because I think even elevation drawings are hard to understand how the building mass starts to break down. While we're still on here, I think it's worth just running very quickly through the materials, starting from the roof with an architectural asphalt shingle. The gutters are internal, the gutters are, are hidden gutters with internal drains. So there will be no downspouts being seen. We would be pulling all the water from the gutters down onto the flat roof and draining off the flat roof. So there, there's no downspouts reaching down to the ground. The field of the building, for the most part, especially the pitched roof masses that you see here, is painted wood clabbards with painted wood corner boards and trim pieces with a granite base that's, that comes down to the ground at the brick walkout front. The windows would be painted aluminum clad wood windows is, is the direction we are going at the moment, as well as painted wood doors. And you'll see a number of doors that exit to the exterior. The doors are included not only for convenience, but they're also included to pick up on that rhythm of, of the residential neighborhood with, with doors happening every 30 feet or so. I think beyond here, you can see beyond there, the, the arched window you see on the right background on the right side, that's the existing 1980s building in the, in the brick mass that attaches to it. That, that's, that's part of this new building, and there's a differentiation but of materials there where that would match the brick of the 1980s building exactly. And having said that, unless there's any questions, we can move on to the elevations. The elevations. This overall elevation really is to stand to, to show really the distance and heights from the 1871 building. As, as, as Lisa had pointed out, the distance between those buildings is significant. And you can see how the massing starts to work down the street on Prospect Street. There's a blow up of that. So we can go to elevation 11 pretty quickly. And here, for the record, we've enumerated all the different materials that are, that are being used that I've just mentioned. A couple of things to point out here. The upper elevation is the Garden Street side of the building. This is the building, this is the side of the building that's bunting up against the fence that's about six feet away from it. And we've pointed out where those light, low lights, those are just kind of walk, walkway lighting that's being added. That's the only added exterior light of the project. The windows back here, these windows are behind this fence, but the ones that are in the lower level that do look into the garage are all spandrel glass. They are not vision glass. So you will not see a car. You will not see any lights of cars through those windows at all. The upper windows are all occupied space and will be vision glass. And you will, you will be able to see when the lights are on in that office. The lower elevation again is a blow up of the Prospect Street elevation. The reason we wanted to show you the perspective first is that there's a number of angles that this building takes on and it distorts the elevations a bit. So I think it was just easier to look at the, the model first. But you can see that this building is broken down into three gable-ended masses. One brick mass and one low, one-story level mass right on the corner of Otis Place and Prospect Street with an entry, an entry kind of canopy on the Prospect Street side of, towards State Street. And go to the next elevation, please. The next elevation, these are kind of, the upper two are relatively minor elevations. They're really showing the garage interest in the upper left, and the intention of the garage door is that the garage door will be, would be, would be textured and painted to look as similar to the clambered siding as possible. The, the intention here is the door goes away. When it's closed and it's closed almost all the time, this door looks like part of the building facade and is, in a way, we're trying to make it a pretty stealth element. So it doesn't draw any attention. What you're seeing on the right is just a little bit of a detail of how the brick mass connects to the 1980s building. And the reason it's there is because when you look at the Prospect Street elevations, parts of it is obscured by other elements. The lower elevation is really, I think, one of the key kind of images of our design. You can see how a number of different masses are all coming together to really break down the scale of a single building to really feel like multiple buildings. And this elevation, you can see the straight-on gable end that's facing Otis Place, the two gable ends that are on Prospect Street and the one low, one-story mass that sits at that corner. The masses have all been sized to, like I said, sit in between, you know, it, those masses are smaller than some of the single houses and, and a little bit larger than, than some others. But in general, they, they fit within the scale and character of, of the residents or houses in the, in the neighborhood. The next image we have, slide 13, is the section. And I think this is a, a drawing that's of, of great interest to most people. This really shows how this building is, is acting and able to accomplish the massing that we are, we are doing. Clearly, you see clearly the, the car stackers are very prominent. You can see the corridor that really acts as that buffer between the, the garage and Prospect Street. You can see the relationship of the eve heights to, from one side of Prospect Street to another. And like Lisa says, we're about a foot higher than, than the bulk of the buildings directly across from us. And, and you can see that the, the top of the, the top of the gables and how, how the, the plan receives the gables and breaks down that scale. And then the, the second section that we have, section 14, is, is a transverse section that looks, that's cut all the way through the, the masses that are on on Prospect Street. Yes, there it is. And again, the, the certain features that are able to be seen here is the one-story mass that sits on Otis Place and Prospect Street corner. The gable end mass that sits behind that towards the Garden Street side. And here, you're able to see this kind of reveal or cutout that we're doing in between the two masses that are sitting on Prospect Street to really allow those gable ends to read as separate masses. As part of the last meeting, there was a request that we look at shadow studies, and we'll go very quickly through the next three slides. The shadow studies that we have produced, since there is no particular guidelines that are laid down by, by Newbury Report of how these are done, we follow the Boston standard for, for permitting for creating shadow studies. So the shadow studies we've done here are, we took the two equinoxes in two solstices of the year. So you have four sheets. Each one is either equinox or solstice. So in this case, you're looking at March 21st, and we've mapped out the shadows that would occur from this building at 9:00 AM, 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM. And so I think these are for reference. We certainly can discuss them more if there are questions about them, but I think they're pretty self-explanatory. In this case, you see that on the equinoxes, 9:00 AM, the shadows are going towards State Street and do not impact Prospect at all. 12:00 PM, the sun is very high. The shadows are starting to cast into Prospect Street. And then at 3:00 PM, we are, our shadows are just reaching across the, the sidewalk here. And I can tell you from our study, those shadows are going up about two feet onto the adjacent buildings and, and no further than that on the equinoxes. Of course, if you click through here, the, the vertical equinox is almost exact, is almost, so it's pretty similar. I, I, you can step, step back one. I think we went past 16 real quick. I believe that was summer solstice. And as you can imagine, the sun is very high. The shadows have the least possible impact in summer. And then 18 is winter. So step down one more, one more slide is winter. Yes. And again, winter is when our sun is the lowest. You're starting to see 9:00 AM, everyone's shadows are extremely long and 12:00 PM, they're the shallowest, but they're, they, they are essentially similar to what a 3:00 PM in the equinox would be in the 12:00 PM model. And then at 3:00 PM, you know, anything that's two feet high is casting a shadow because the sun is so low. I think what's very important to look at when you look at these four studies is, is the corner, is the house that's just across the street from the one-story, the one-story corner of Otis Place and Prospect. That, that building sits about the same mass and height as ours, and you can see that the shadow that it's casting is almost identical. So I think what we're asking you to do is look and see how this, the shadows being cast by this building are very little or no different at all than the buildings that are casting shadows already within the neighborhood. They are, they are almost identical. At this point, I'm not sure if we're prepared to do this, Andy. We were going to walk through the three-dimensional representations of the building, and if we are able to, we'd love to do that through our live model.
Yeah. So you should be able to share your screen. If you have a problem, let me know. I can, I might have to stop share on my end.
Okay. If you could make sure that Shreya Shaw, who is the other designer who is here with us, she has ability to share her screen. She's going to run that model.
Got it.
Thank you.
And Shreya, let me know if you're having any issue switching to your view.
Okay. Just about to switch right now. Thank you. Just let me know when you can see the model.
Perfect.
Yeah, I see it. So this is an intro to this model. This is a live model. So the stills that we provided as, as record are taken directly from this model. But I thought we would walk through this model because at any point in, especially during any kind of discussion period, we want to be very transparent about how, how this building looks and feels across the neighborhood. And so this is a great tool to do that because we're not locked to a single view. But as we go through this, I'd like to stay with the still views until there's, there's questions to be asked. So this view is one that I think we always like to start with because it, you know, we of course have the 1871s building right here in the foreground. And looking back through the trees, this, the, if Shreya, you can sort of circle with your, yes. So that is the, that is, that is our, our, that is the additions profile right there. And again, I think right away, you're starting to see what the whole approach here was, is that, you know, give it the squint test. And I would challenge you to, to, to tell me where the neighborhood starts and stops. In this case, the, the building has now started to blend quite well into the fabric of the neighborhood. As we move down the street, as we move down the street, we're right at the corner of State and Prospect here. Again, you start, you still see, you're really predominantly seeing the pitched gable and roof of the addition. You can see how it starts to move down Prospect Street and then start to break down further right at the corner of, of of Otis Place. Shreya, maybe you can just pan to the right and just give people a sense of how we can show the model a little bit. So if you just do a quick pan. So just to show you that this is live and three-dimensional. So if we wanted to turn our head or look up or look down, we can do that. But for now, I'd like to move down Prospect Street a little bit. So if we just go to tab three. Again, we're 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 sort of taking a walk through the neighborhood, we started at State Street and we're moving down Prospect now. And now you can see the nineteen eighties addition sort of directly center screen. You can see how our first piece of connector connects to that materially. And then you can see more clearly the the kind of gable ended in wood clad. Parts of the mass. This front canopy does a couple of things, one is we're very much trying to mitigate scale. We know that there's a lot of buildings. There's a lot of residential building elements that I think we need to be very careful of, and and this was directly from hearing public comment. And comments from from this board, these elements are are can constitute our direct our direct kind of action that we took from from the things we've heard. In one, one of the things we we were very much trying to do is make sure that this building has a front door. And in in, you know, with being able to make ground floor people space in an actual lobby. The building now is able to have a front door that is right is right, kind of very visible part of the public way. And maybe you can step a little closer to look at that a little further. And it's a, this is a little bit more sort of better look at it. You can scale figures there are being shown to understand sort of the scale of it, the windows, the way they sit, they're about two, they are two foot ten off the ground. They are three foot six wide, they're seven feet tall, the this is very. It's it's in it's in line with a lot of the size of the glazing on in the rest of the neighborhood. And and again, you're starting to see how the breakdown of the scale works with the reveal between these two masses. I think another thing that's worth pointing out is. You know, there are some buildings here that are incredibly small, like even for 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 normal housing standards. And it they're they're delightful and and they're they're quite wonderful. And I a lot of the efforts that we made here, starting on this end, working our way all the way down to Otis Place corner. Are really to make sure that the scale elements of this project start to speak to those buildings as well. And so, you know, this is a perspective that starts to really see, you can see on the left side of the image, you know, how these elements start to to dialogue between. From one to the other. Let's let's go over to Otis. In in we kind of start at, oh, let's, yeah, we'll go to five real quick. So this is just a little closer, we're just stepping down the street. And again, you can start to see the rhythm of of these exterior doors as they move down the street and and further see the breakdown at Otis Place corner. So if we if we flip over to Otis and Garden, I think this is also a very key approach. To the to the project. Again, coming up against a number of. Seen in relationship to the number of the other houses in the neighborhood, this was a very key moment for our redesign to have. Very residential scale masses and even smaller than residential scale masses, when you speak about the corner element. Come down to the ground and really start to create the kind of. Almost like organic geometries that happen on the street where some houses sit parallel to the street, some houses don't. Certain roofs pop up and down, certain roofs don't, certain large bay window elements have prominence. And and so we tried to add that kind of texture in in massing to to this corner. And we personally think that that this is working quite well. If you look at seven, this is just seven is just stepping closer again. And you can start to see how those how that corner starts to. Work and then. Tab eight, again, I think for for a number of reasons, this is. This is a key moment in the project where where to look at it and and see that this looks like. Two, maybe three, maybe even four different buildings is exactly the point that the the scale has broken down and. We're trying to be very, very sensitive to all the architectural elements within the residential neighborhood. Including the inclusion of a of the chimney, which, you know, I think as we're sitting around really trying to hear. The kind of suggestions that were being made by by the folks in the neighborhood and folks on the board. You know, these kinds of elements came to mind is to really bring home the fact that we are listening and that the residential quality and. Character is is quite important and and this is this kind of elements, I think, help bring it to home that that that's what this. Project is trying to do, it's trying to have a very clear dialogue with the with the neighborhood. We want to show something from Garden Street, and I think this goes to our point of of every, you know, we really worked around this building. And so what you're seeing here is you're actually looking in between two of the houses on Garden Street, you're seeing the fence that that separates the two. But you're also seeing the fact that this building. We tried from almost every place you see it to to make it look like more than one thing, it's it doesn't look like just one building. You look through there and and you will clearly feel like there's two different kinds of architectures happening, two different kinds of massing happening. A low flat roofed. Brick mass in a gable residential feeling gable end mass and and that's that is something that we were trying to be very sensitive and and careful about. The last two. I think we can hold off, well, we can show it, the last two are just overalls in really showing the building in its context. And showing how the massing itself, even from an aerial point of view, it's it's, you know. To us, you're you look at this and say, well, I see I see four roof forms. And in those roof forms geometrically, you know, blend into the the kind of varied roof forms that happen in the directly in the neighborhood. And just just so. And and we can, we can spin around, we can orbit around on this perspective. If everyone choose to see this from any other place, I I I would caution us to make too much out of looking at this kind of view. This is the helicopter view. This building was not designed to be seen from a helicopter, it's being seen designed to be seen from the street. It's being designed to be seen from adjacent buildings and it's being designed to be seen from. You know, from. Ground level perspectives, that's that's the approach that we took because that's the way it's going to be experienced at all times. So with that, that's our that's our walkthrough and and we we look forward to having dialogue with you about this. I would love to keep this up as long this a model up as long as we can, because I think it's the best tool we have to describe what we've accomplished.
So that is the end of the applicant presentation for now?
It is unless Lisa wanted to have anyone else speak.
No, I think that's a good a good jumping off point for you, Madam Chair.
Fine, then we'll open public comment. Let me remind everybody that you have to raise your hand and Andy will call on you. When you are called on, please give your name, your address, limit your comments to two minutes. And please give your connection or affiliation to the project. If you are a bank employee, if you are on a butter, if you are any other way associated with the bank. Or anything that would help us understand where you're coming from with your comments. So with that, I'll ask Andy to call on the first person who would like to speak.
Okay, and the first person we have is Tim Whacker. Tim, you'll need to unmute on your end as well.
There we go, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning board, I am reading from a prepared statement, so if I trip up my words, please bear with me. My wife Laura and I live at thirteen Otis Place, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I will be speaking on behalf of both of us, so with the board's permission, I would like to use her allotted time as well as my own. I've spoken at two public hearings on this application and each time my concerns over traffic congestion being exacerbated by this project. Have gone completely unnoticed. So I'm going to take another shot at it tonight and maybe someone there will take the time to explain why a formal traffic study is being waived. And it just to to add, I didn't hear any comment about traffic in the the presentation just given. In the absence of a formal traffic study, I'm going to quote again, the trash haulers who told me this is the most constricted neighborhood in the city. I'm wondering if anybody on the board disagrees with that assessment. I've also forwarded to you all pictures of that congestion, which also have not been addressed in any fashion. Those pictures and my own experience living at the intersection of Garden and Otis for the past eighteen months. Show that at least once or twice a week, Garden, Prospect, Otis, or any combination thereof are sufficiently clogged. That emergency vehicles would have access to this neighborhood dangerously restricted. I do not want my house to be on fire or my neighbor to be suffering from a heart attack while first responders wait for a moving truck to get out of their way. And I can tell you, there are moving trucks in this neighborhood all the time. This is a very densely populated neighborhood, does the prospect of such a scenario really seem so remote that you are willing to make things worse? Without being fully informed of the risks involved. I've also said at previous hearings, IFS has fourteen other locations. It's not a Newbury Port Bank, it's a regional bank with just one quarter of its total deposits in this city. Yet, as I understand that the justification the bank offers for insisting on this onerous site, is a stipulation buried in its bylaws. That it's supposed to be headquartered in Newbury Port. The bank doesn't need an act of Congress to change that. Moreover, as the COVID nineteen pandemic is making clear, and as any follower of technology trends already knows. Administration heavy enterprises like banks are just going to be moving away from large office based operations. And more toward online customer banking and employee telecommute work from home operations. Unless IFS is planning to buck this trend, the need for this project is likely to only diminish over time. So why pursue it when it's clearly going against the wishes of what has clearly been recognized as some of the stiffest resident opposition. Of any project this board has considered in recent history. There has been a chorus of voices extolling IFS's business and civic service to the city as justification for permitting this project. Yet this neighborhood will suffer vastly disproportionate harm for a project that seems so ill suited. From economic, planning and public safety perspectives. True, it's important for me as a relative newcomer to this neighborhood to recognize another reason the city might be inclined favorably toward this project. And that is the prospect that without it, IFS might accelerate its migration beyond the city or even pull out entirely. This is certainly something I and I suspect all of my neighbors do not want to see. That bank, that historic bank is gorgeous, the prospect of it, or even the tastefully done offices across Prospect from it. Being vacant is untenable. Your willingness to weigh these matters as individuals and as a board is commendable, and I don't envy you your task. But I'd just like to leave you with the thought that you are a planning board tasked with planning for the city's future as much as its present needs. And the future does not favor this project, thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have is Glenn Richards.
Does that sound okay? Hi there, Glenn Richards, Sixth Can Street, and also Chair of the Newbury Port Historical Commission. Just want to very briefly let the planning board know that the Newbury Port Historical Commission did receive essentially the same presentation. At our last meeting a couple of weeks ago and the. We decided that we wanted a little more time with with the new plans, et cetera, but they're on their our agenda for tomorrow night. And if the planning board so desires it, it and it's my expectation that you will, we're going to be preparing. Yet another historical report. Beyond that, I don't think I should, you know, come any further because we'll be discussing it on tomorrow night's agenda.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
The next person we have is Tom Colter John. John, you will need to unmute on your end as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Tom Colter John, sixty four Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. I would like to respectfully request that you pay more attention to the concerns of the neighborhood. It would be a shame if this project went ahead as proposed without full attention. And remediation of those concerns. I believe it is possible and should be done. There is no need to end up with upset neighbors, most of whom are bank customers. In spite of the assertions by the applicant. This proposal is not compatible with the historic neighborhood. Buildings seven or eight feet higher than the original historic building are simply not compatible. These buildings are connected and fully relate to one another. Please listen to the neighbors, thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Colleen Turner.
Hi, thank you very much, my name is Colleen Turner Sacino, fifteen Otis Place, Newbury Port. I am a proud non customer, non incorporator and non trustee of the Institution for Savings. The bank's site plan before you enhances nothing and is sensitive to nothing. It continues to be troubling and the start of a precedent for two additional banks on State Street to permanently mimic this absurd concept. Adversely affecting the neighborhoods just like us of Temple Charter and our Essex Street. This behemoth flies in the very face of your Newbury Port's code of ordinances. It's pushing an incredibly inappropriate and enormous building into the back end of its State Street location. It has been and continues to be insulting to me personally as a neighbor, but more importantly to us as a community. That has long been appreciative of historic relevance and value, and I assure you, Tom Colter Jan would agree with that. With each successive redo, the bank is behaving like a child forced to eat its vegetables. Move it around the plate, change the brick to clabbered, remove the downspouts, no one will notice, it's the overall football print in height that bothers us. I agree with my neighbor Tim Whacker, in addition, the setbacks or lack thereof promotes dangerous traffic patterns. With the shadows and limit visibility that we just saw, it is excessive, it's excessively high roof and eve lines. Present a blind corner putting pedestrians, residents and visitors. As well as hardworking postal workers, public trash and commercial delivery agents further at risk to live their lives and do their jobs. And while I sit here, I can't help but ask why, why seven months into a pandemic that is clearly surging? The bank wants to add physical bodies to their workplace around a fireplace, no less. And put all their employees as well as their customers, not to mention the many people with whom their people come into contact with at risk. It doesn't make sense. Stop, just stop and start over, thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have is Steve Charette.
Yes, hi, my name is Steve Charette, thank you members of the planning board, I live at sixteen Prospect Street. On the corner of Prospect and Otis Place, forty five feet from the the proposal. And so we're we are a direct a butter. In our opinion, the applicant has made, you know, notable improvements to the design. But we we are in strong opposition to the project for a number of reasons. They've made notable improvements to the design, but it is not subordinate to the original structure. We object to the unwilling unwillingness to add reasonable setbacks. We also do, we are in disagreement with the applicant that when they state that they have met the requirements of the site plan review. We do not believe they have, we don't believe that they have met the requirements of. We do not believe they have, we don't believe that they have met the requirements of community character. Provide for a smooth transition between industrial, commercial, and residential areas to preserve the character of individual city neighborhoods. We strongly believe that our quality of life will be negatively impacted. And the enjoyment of our property will be negatively impacted. We have eleven windows that are going to face the property. We're specifically concerned about the health impact of, of noise. We already hear the building services equipment and it's over two hundred feet away. With this building looming over our property and only forty-five feet away, we can only imagine how much the noise is going to be exacerbated. We also don't believe the applicant has met the land use planning criteria to provide for commercial development. And is sensitive to Newburyport's distinct community character. So we continue and we have a number of times stated our opposition based on a size, scale, and massing of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Erin Clausen.
Hello, this is Anne Clausen. Erin and I and our daughter live at three Otis Place, right next to Stephen Renee. And we are very opposed to this project. We thank everyone who's spoken before us and we agree with what they have said. Now, I'd also like to bring up that I'm hoping the planning board will wait for the Historic Commission review before making any determination. And when you say, when we heard the plans and that the, you, they're in line with the other homes. I don't understand how that could be true, and I don't see any homes on one side that literally have sixteen to twenty windows in one building. It's massive, as we've all said time and time again. It's peaked more so than the other historic homes in this neighborhood. And it's not just us I'm worried about, it's the Newburyport reputation of being a charming historic town that everyone loves to come to visit. So please take all of this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Peter Mackin.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Peter Mackin. My wife Maureen and I live directly across the street from the proposed construction. We're at eleven and thirteen Prospect Street. We also sent a letter with a number of comments earlier this week, which I hope everyone has received. This is the third proposal by the bank, and each proposal has gotten higher, wider, and more massive. That's been our biggest complaint as neighbors. The scale is totally out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. The, there is a tunnel effect and the renderings don't show this because they don't have cars in the street, okay? And they don't show traffic with cars parked in the street. The basic issue with regard to the width is the fact that you've removed any setback. The building comes directly to the sidewalk, which is only six feet wide versus the other side of the street. It is on our side, it's nine feet wide sidewalk, so it's a very narrow sidewalk. And it's caused by this indoor corridor, which is supposedly a beneficial buffer. I think it's caused a major problem. The aerial view would be more, I think, appropriate if you took it from the Fair Street Otis side, looking back to State Street on Prospect. And I, and I'd just like to also say that we've offered a number of suggestions as neighbors of what the bank might want to consider. I.e. putting more of the parking lot, all of it, the indoor employee parking below ground. This would greatly lower the overall size and mass of the building. And we haven't heard anything back from that, or quite frankly, many of our other suggestions. The neighbors have offered a lot of suggestions that would reduce that size. And we just have an issue with regard to that we never get feedback with regard to the suggestions we make. And yet, we never hear any options that the bank is looking at besides a bigger, wider, more massive building each time they make a proposal. So that's, that's the sum of my comments. Thank you very much.
Next person is Timothy Piper. Timothy. Having some trouble here with Timothy. Let's take a break for that for a moment. Mark Griffin.
Hi, Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Griffin, I'm going to butter along with my wife Claire at four Otis Place. I believe we're the closest to butter to the project. And we've been participating in these meetings for many months now. And I, it is my hope that I can actually speak for Claire as well and utilize her time. And not actually waste your time. I have a feeling that, over these many months, that the planning board may actually be growing frustrated with the same refrain that's coming from the butters, myself and Claire included. Which is that, you know, the project is too big. And that it's looming and that it takes up too much space in our particular neighborhood. And I apologize if that is the view of the planning board. But I have to say, the reason that we have continued this refrain is because really, the applicant has, has not changed that particular aspect of the project. So they came in with a very large and very massive brick building that was attached to what exists. And then, you know, showed that, okay, well, we, you know, we, we got rid of, you know, sort of that massing. But massing is not actually sized. Massing is, you know, breaking up the, sort of the envelope of the building, which they did do. And so this dramatic aesthetic change is supposed to, you know, present to the planning board that, you know, look what we've done to change this project. But fundamentally, they really haven't. I still have a six-foot setback or thereabouts. I have no idea why the planning board is so reluctant to, or excuse me, not the planning board, the applicant is so reluctant to provide a reasonable setback to my house. And some screening, some landscape screening, which seemed quite conventional and customary in most applications. And yet, you know, this project that is proposed now is still built out basically to the, you know, the setbacks that were originally proposed.
Excuse me, Mark, it's been two minutes. I don't know if the chair wants to address your, taking your wife's time or not.
Yes, that's fine. Give him another two minutes, please.
I don't need, I know, I don't know that I need another two minutes, but.
Carry on until you've finished then.
I do appreciate the, the time that you're giving me. I would also actually, you know, address the point about the applicant having agreed, or excuse me, presented that they've complied with site plan review. I respectfully disagree. I think the planning board has significant discretion to condition site plan review with respect to section fifteen HB with respect to height, with respect to bulk. And with respect to, in section seven, you can request appropriate setbacks. And of course, you know, my house, I've been seeking that setback and that landscape screening all along. And yet, I have heard nothing from the applicant. And I would definitely request the planning board, request the applicant to at least provide that. With respect to the overall project, I still believe that the best location for this is on State Street. And not in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next person we have is Stephanie Nikotic.
Hello, Stephanie Nikotic, ninety-three High Street. I'm just a resident, a nearby resident to the bank. My comment is about site plan review. The applicant has long discouraged your questions about its program for this expansion. But under site plan review, this is important to your decision. The bank's program is now up to fifty new office spaces and a large ground-level conference room with access from the sidewalk. Will this intensify use of public ways in a dense residential neighborhood? Abutters have testified about the current excessive traffic on Otis Place, Prospect, and Garden Streets. On November fourth, you will hear an application for a permit notification at one oh two, one oh four High Street. To replace a permeable parking area on Otis Place with asphalt. Due to a litany of traffic-related problems, including frequent, frequent use of this private property as a turnaround area by both commercial vehicles and lost motorists unaware that Otis Place is a dead end. Newburyport Site Plan Review Regulations recognize that certain developments, even if generally suitable in a particular zoning district. Can adversely affect the purpose of zoning because of their size and complexity and their impacts on historic quality and community character. Including traffic, air quality, and light. The zoning intent is to provide a smooth transition between commercial and residential areas. The applicant's plan still fails to do this. Thank you.
Next person we have is Paula Renda.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, my name is Paula Renda. I have lived in Newburyport for sixteen years. I live at sixteen Otis Place. This is a neighborhood I retired to and a neighborhood I love. Regardless of the continued concern and protest of the residents of our neighborhood surrounding the institute. The bank continues to press on, to push a massive structure against an already very congested area with parking issues and narrow streets, which interestingly, in all of the drawings, we don't see cars or the narrow streets. The placement of structures right up against a sidewalk with little or no setback creates a feeling of a fortress. Closing in our neighborhood even further. As you can see, our Newburyport residents are very concerned about how this project will affect the charm of this beautiful city that we love. I ask you to take our comments into consideration. Thank you.
Next person we have is Timothy Piper. Timothy, are you there?
Sorry, can you hear me? Could you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
You can hear me, okay, this is Tim's wife Carol. I live at twelve Otis Place, right down here in the same neighborhood. And I just have a few comments that, you know, we've been going through this since last January. You can't make any decisions on these little plans that they're showing that are really not in perspective. And no cars, and just the high, it's just going to ruin the neighborhood. And it's, it's, it's just way too big. And that's basically my point. And, you know, the same, you know, we're really worried about the, the look from State Street. What will it look like back there? But that nobody cares what, you know, it looks like from our side of the street on Otis Place. So, thank you.
Thank you. I believe everybody in the audience thus far who has raised their hand has spoken.
Okay, just to let everybody know, once I close the public comment part of this particular meeting, we won't be opening it again. So this is your last chance, if you'd like to speak, to raise your hand and Andy will recognize you, so.
Great, we do have a few others now. Thank you, Chair. So Sean Sullivan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the time to talk. My name is Sean Sullivan. I live here at nine Prospect Street. A direct abutter across the street from the, the proposed development. And I just wanted to say that, you know, the appearance has changed dramatically of this plan. But the main issues have not. The scale, size, and setback are still the same. You know, the bank has done a good job at really bringing some innovative, different designs at camouflaging a parking garage. But I think the main concerns of the neighborhood have still remained the same. And I know mine have, really have not changed at all. And I, I don't want to sound like a broken record. I don't want to sound like, you know, I'm saying the same things over and over again. But it's because the bank is doing the same things over and over again when it comes to the size, scale, and setback. My house is a, is much smaller than the rest of the houses around here. And so it's disproportionately affected from the, from the sun. And I know they're providing some, some different shade analysis is there. But basically, the sun sets at three o'clock on my house with this development. And while they talk a lot about the eaves line and roof lines changing. The angle of the sun hasn't changed one bit from the original design, going all the way back to last winter. It hasn't changed one bit. And that just goes to the quality of life here, inside my house with my wife and my family. And I really hope you would take that into consideration. You know, I'll just say that I never thought I'd, I'd live in Newburyport. And see the day when a neighbor, and that's who I consider the, the Institute for Savings to be. A neighbor would shove a project this big down the neighborhood's throat. And so that's why I'm asking the planning board, I would like to task you with this, but I hope I never see that day happen. And I know you have a very difficult job here. This is a very difficult thing because the bank has put a lot of time into this and a lot of changes into this.
That's time.
Still remain the same. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have is Grace Connolly.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, my name is Grace Connolly and I live at forty-seven Green Street, Newburyport. I've lived and worked in Newburyport now since nineteen eighty-four. And I've certainly seen the challenges living and working downtown that have occurred. And I live in, in, in a residential area that of course is also surrounded by business. I walk this area and I, I actually feel that I want to commend the bank for its great effort in trying to really, you know, have a segue, blend what is, you know, a beautiful bank building. And their need to expand as respectfully as they possibly can, understanding the concerns of the neighborhood. But I do support the project. I think the bank is, is a good neighbor and incredibly important part of our community. And I walk that area actually every day and every evening with my new puppy as it is. And I can see that this is not going to be, I mean, I know that change is hard. But I really think that this is going to be very important for our community. The bank has been a community neighbor and a very good neighbor. I serve on the board of Anna Jakes Hospital. I've been on the Economic Development, I am on the Economic Development Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. And I don't think that we can underestimate just important, how important the bank has been to our community. Virtually every organization. Virtually every organization that I've served on has benefited from the bank. I'm especially impressed with the efforts with respect to the parking. I think it's been incredibly creative. It's a challenge. We live in downtown Newburyport. We work in downtown Newburyport. And so there is a blend of residential and commercial. I experienced it myself. But I want to commend the bank and to, to say to the planning board, this is a very important project for the present and future of Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have is Lloyd Hamm.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lloyd Hamm and I'm the CEO of Newburyport Bank. I'd like to thank the planning board, the IFS and our great local neighbors for this opportunity to speak as a leader of another multi-century cornerstone in our community. In my role on the Economic Development Committee, I feel obligated to support economic activity in downtown, continue to support the charitable giving. We, we really benefit from the fact that two banks for over 100 years have been cornerstones of our community. I participated in the presentation by the institution of its original design. And if you recall, I encouraged our neighbors and our friends at the IFS to continue to talk and try and find a mutually agreeable solution to meet both parties' needs and desires. I've now reviewed all the new plans and the, and the model online. I, I actually believe the revised proposal provides a greater balance between the needs of the bank and the comments of the neighboring residential neighborhood. It's not final. This plan does provide a transition to the residential end of the property that I think is far more appropriate. And I believe the bank has submitted a plan that is more sensitive to the residential neighborhood. I'm also pleased with the bank's ability to enclose the parking in its generator. Our bank's main office also abuts residences as part of the commercial district. I do understand the need to both operate and grow a business while being sensitive to our neighbors, which are almost always our customers. I still believe that a solution that works for both sides and brings more customers to our fellow downtown businesses on a daily basis will support the vibrancy of downtown Newburyport and the small businesses, particularly the hospitality businesses. What I would encourage is that the communication between the IFS and, and the neighbors continue to work towards solving the solution so that this project could proceed in a way that both sides could be proud of the outcome. And I wish them luck on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands at this time, Chair. Nope, that's it. One more hand, Chair. Frank Cousins.
Hi, good evening. My name is Frank Cousins. I am the president of the Newburyport Chamber of Commerce, a lifelong resident of the city of Newburyport. Goes without saying that allowing the bank to improve and to grow in its original location in our downtown is very important to the continued economic viability of our city. I think that when we look at banks and insurance companies, the strength that they bring to a downtown, to bring people to downtown is very, very important, clearly in these economic times. But just over history, when you look at it, I would not support this growth if the bank has not shown a need to, to make this addition work for the city of Newburyport. I also sit on the Economic Development Committee of the chamber. And we understand with the initial design, I listened to that presentation. They've now come back in with a lot of changes, of changes to the outside. And I think too, taking the exit out on Prospect Street was a very good idea. You know, having all the cars come in and out on State Street. So I think that's a big improvement. I think the bank has shown a willingness to invest in the city of Newburyport through its own handling of parking. And I know it's tough for the neighborhoods, especially abut downtown. But I think they should be commended for also enclosing the generator. I think the architects has really tried to do a good job to change it from, you know, a, a brick building to try to really to, to show four different structures we've seen to try to flow in the south end. I personally live in the south end. I know it's very congested and tucked. But I think that this proposal, they've really tried to, to make some necessary changes. And I think that when we look at overall what the Institution for Savings Bank has done in the city of Newburyport and the greater Newburyport area, it is something that I think from an economic standpoint, quality of life standpoint, is something we feel very committed to at the chamber. So with that, I thank the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. And Chair, I do see one more hand raised, or two actually. Gary Correles.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Gary Correles. I own the properties at 1517 and 1921 Prospect Streets. I'm a longtime owner of those buildings. I do not currently reside in Newburyport. I live in, in San Diego, California. I take an active part in real estate in Newburyport as a real estate property owner there and have been involved in real estate in Newburyport since 1973. I will say that the abutters and residents of the area near the bank have all spoken tonight and have spoken at many meetings in the past. As some have said tonight, traffic congestion has not been addressed. The issue of parking underground to lower the height of the proposed building has not been addressed. The issue of sun and loss of light to many of the properties is still a problem. Without sufficient light, buildings are colder. Everyone who lives in my properties is going to be affected on the front side of the buildings because there will be no light. There will be no shadow. And it was an open space before and has been an open space for years. And they will be adversely affected. The bank has made an effort to address the quality and character of what they hope to do. And we know of the bank's contributions to the city. No one denies the importance of this bank as, as, as well as the other banks in town. No one, no one denies the fact that, or at least of the people who have spoken tonight, people think that there is not a mutually agreeable solution. The point of Tim Wacker's to the future need of this expansion is well taken. A number of area banks have closed branches and reduced hours. Growth, if needed, does not need to be in a congested area of the city. Why not consider space near another of the bank's branches where it will not adversely affect people who live surrounding that area? Thank you.
Next person we have is Maureen Condon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will try to be brief. For the record, my name is Freeman Condon and I live at 6 Forest Road in Salisbury. I did get some bad information, so I timed my remarks at four minutes, not two, so you can stop me whenever you want. In the interest of full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Institution for Savings. I am intensely proud to be associated with an organization that enjoys an undisputed 200-year history of being a good neighbor. Our buildings are immaculate. Our properties are meticulously maintained. Although I was born in, raised in, and lived in the neighborhood being discussed tonight for 25 years, I no longer do. Many of my oldest and dearest friends live in Ward 2. I would never advocate for anything that I thought was contrary to their best interests. I am intimately familiar with the block in question, having walked by it hundreds, if not thousands of times on my way uptown into school. I am aware of its charm, its character and its constraints. I learned early on the value of compromise in settling any dispute. The bank has listened to the neighbors and has made changes throughout the whole process in an attempt to accommodate them. We solved the parking problem, enclosed the generator, changed the building materials and ultimately redesigned the entire structure. The neighbors, not so much. With every problem we addressed, they moved the goalposts and came up with no objections. As a three-time past chairperson of a neighboring towns' planning board, I know firsthand the angst that can accompany making tough decisions, especially ones that might be in conflict with some of the abutters' wishes. I also know the deep satisfaction of following the law of allowing a private property owner the optimum use of their land allowed by code. You have the responsibility to listen to the concerns of neighbors and of abutters, and I commend you for doing so.
That's two minutes.
May I continue, Madam Chair?
No, please wrap it up.
Thank you. You have no obligation to appease all unreasonable demands, not to ameliorate all concerns. Sometimes it is impossible to do so. Thank you.
Chair, I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'm going to close public comments. And as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to what they've heard from the public. And then we'll go into discussion with the planning board members and the applicant. So over to the applicant now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Mead. I'm going to address a couple of issues and then I'll turn it over to Christopher to see if he has any follow-up. And I think if Ron Mueller is on, I'd like him to address the, the traffic issue because I think that's, that's important. Given the fact that we've removed the secondary egress onto Prospect Street and where the traffic will be flowing. So I want to address one point that a couple of people made that I think needs to be clarified. The height of the new, of the original structure, the mean height of the 1870 building is 32 feet, two and a half inches. The proposed mean height is 31 inches. The top of the cornice of the original structure, 1871 building is 33 feet, 11 inches. And the ridge of the proposed building is 37 feet. I think that I, I wanted to straighten that out because there were some exaggerations that were made that were not accurate. And I think that the, particularly the discussion about how the, the tallest part of this building is at the rear of the lot is very important. Similarly, and I think Chris can talk about this a little bit, he touched on it in his original presentation, Mr. Sullivan's building, which sits across from the new entryway. There was a lot of thought that went into the location of the gables and the, the new building along Prospect Street. And the fact that the entryway is smaller and is directly across the street from Mr. Sullivan's building, which is our house, which is one of the smallest buildings on Prospect Street. And so I, I believe that some of the things that he said is not accurate based upon the shadow studies that we provided and the reality about where the location is of that porch area and entryway as opposed to one of the buildings being located directly across the street from his house. So with that, I'm going to first turn it over to Christopher to see if he has anything else to add in that regard. And then after him, I'd like Ron to address the traffic issue.
Thank you, Lisa. I, I don't have much to add. I mean, I think we've heard a lot of the same comments, you know. I still, I still would urge the board to appreciate that the, that the effort in, in design choices that were made here were in, in almost completely in reaction to us hearing and listening to the issues of, of the neighbors. Last time we've, we, we heard from them, there was a lot of talk about, I don't want to see cars and, you know, we're very concerned about noise. A, a number of remarkable design changes happened that are actually quite difficult to do. And, and we, we spent a lot of time actually vetting them all out so that things like activating the street and, and shielding everyone, everyone's view from a car has gone away. And to do that, of course, some things have to give. So yes, we, we pushed the building closer to the setback line or closer to the property line to accommodate that. So I think, I think we are hearing everything that's being said. The other thing I want to mention and I'll, and I'll stop talking about, you know, hand this off, is when it comes to us not being clear or, or forthcoming about certain elements of the building, we have the material right here to show the board literally any corner of this building from any angle they would like to look at. We are, we are absolutely not hiding any, any mass or bulk or square footage or corners. Everything can be seen here. So I urge, I urge you to, to allow us to show you this from anywhere, from any street that we have modeled here, we can see the building from.
Thank you, Christopher. Ron, if you're on, it would be great for you to address the issue with the traffic that has been brought up.
Sure, Lisa. Madam Chair, members of the board, Ron Mueller, the principal with Ron Mueller and Associates and the traffic consultant for the project. As you know, in listening to some of the comments that were made by the residents, we did prepare a traffic assessment for this project to document essentially what, how much traffic this project would generate and the impact that traffic would have on the residential streets. What that study shows, and by the way, that study was done back in February of last year for a much larger project than is currently proposed. But even at that larger scale, the study projected that we would add about 12 to 13 trips during the peak hours, fewer traffic, fewer trips during other hours of the day. Peak hours essentially being the afternoon rush, commuting rush hour or the Saturday morning or midday shopping time periods. So we're talking six cars entering, six cars exiting, and that is based on national standards for these types of projects. In reality, as we've documented in our study, the traffic generation will likely be far less than that because this project will add only seven additional employees. But in any event, that study also was based on the original plan, which had a driveway proposed on Prospect Street with the majority of access to and from this new building addition or the parking lot under the building at that time, accessing to and from Prospect Street, which obviously Prospect Street being one-way would have more of an impact on the residential streets than this current project does. The, the revisions that have been presented to you tonight now has all of the access and egress to and from this underground garage via essentially State Street. So the impact to residential streets will be far less than we've even demonstrated basically a negligible, negligible impact in our original assessment. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much, Ron. With that, Madam Chair, we'd love to hear questions and comments from the board.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up to board comments. I just want to reiterate that we are still waiting for the report, the advisory report from the Historical Commission. And so what you're going to hear tonight are, are, are reactions to obviously what we've been presented and what we've heard in the public comment, but these will not be our final comments on this project. So by definition, we will be continuing this public hearing and at the end of all of our discussion, we'll just decide what date is appropriate for that. So let's go to members of the board. Please chime in. Can I ask you in your comments, which I'm sure are going to be forthcoming when somebody breaks the silence, to address specifically the major issues that have been brought up by the public that continue to seem to be of concern to them around size, massing and height, as well as setbacks and the design that you've seen tonight?
This is MJ. I don't mind starting.
Thank you.
Um, I guess mine is actually more of a question, both to perhaps Andy Port and Lisa Mead is about this site plan review and what criteria have not been met that people are bringing up? Because I'm not really sure I understand what hasn't been met.
Well, this is Andy Port, the planning director. I do not see issues from a site plan perspective that have not been addressed. You know, the civil engineer that does peer review has already signed up on the stormwater management aspect of the plans. Other city departments have reviewed and approved the submission that's been given by the applicant. There is not, I think that the traffic issues, as was spoken to earlier, have been addressed in this. And that was addressed earlier on in the process earlier, earlier this year. So I'm not aware of any site issues that have not been addressed. I think that's the reason why I think the majority of the planning board's discussion and deliberation on this so far has been about the architecture has been about the architecture of the building.
Andy, let me just add a question or a clarification to MJ's question in your response. In site plan review under under a special permit, can you clarify our, shall I say, authority to deviate, because it is a special permit, from the zoning requirements, in particular setback and height in our request to the applicant?
Yeah, right. So there are zero lot line setbacks in the underlying district. That's the baseline that we start with essentially in zoning. So we understand that the applicant here has the ability under the underlying district to go to the zero lot line. You know, and and the height requirements are obviously called out directly in the ordinance. However, in the demolition or the downtown overlay district, there is the ability of the planning board to look at the compatibility of the scale and mass of the structure and how that fits in context with, you know, the historic neighborhood and any adjacent structures essentially. So, you know, I think that, you know, we should be starting with the premise that the volume that's being proposed is consistent with the underlying district. And then the board would be looking at the authority it has under the downtown overlay district to determine whether or not what's being proposed within those setbacks is, you know, consistent with the fabric of the, you know, original bank building and the abutting neighborhood, which obviously the applicants presented to those points this evening.
Madam Chair, might I chime in for a second?
Sure.
So I think I want to, the board should be clear, as of course, as it knows, as Andy said, there are two different permits and two different standards. So site plan review is not a special permit. Site plan review is its own permit, you know, the design of the site and the criteria is set forth, which Andy has addressed. And then there's the special permit, which has criteria. And it does give the board some latitude in applying that criteria, but you have to apply the criteria. So if you were to look at 27 F5C, it talks about nonhistoric styles permitted for new construction and additions. And it very clearly, and I I'm not going to repeat myself, but I read it earlier. So I think it very clearly says that what the standard is that the board is supposed to apply.
Thank you for that reminder. And for everybody on the board, my plan was to look at all of the decision criteria for site plan review and special permit in general and downtown overlay district at the end of our comments. If we need to do that sooner, Andy can pull them up for us. But right now, I was hoping, I was expecting that we'd have general comments and specific ones. And we can get into the actual criteria and see how they overlay with what everybody has set up to that point afterwards. So let, that was a good introduction, MJ. Let's go on with some responses to what people have heard tonight. Yes, Anne?
Yes. I guess my my comment.
Does anyone else have trouble hearing, Anne?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all it's all muddled.
It's like you're underwater.
It sounds like there might be something over your microphone. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think so. It is in the computer though.
Oh dear.
What might I do?
Well, I can't understand you. It's just a bit painful.
Yeah.
Well, could I call?
Yes.
Yeah. Why don't you do that? And we'll hear from other people in the meantime.
Okay.
All right. Would someone else like to comment while we're waiting for Anne to come in another way?
I'll comment just that, I mean, for me, ultimately, because this came down to character of the neighborhood, it came down to, for me, the architecture. I think the architecture has come a long way, and I think it does, it looks and feels compatible with the neighborhood to me.
Anyone else?
I guess I would also like to say that I believe it's the transformation has only been in a good direction. I still question the overall height. And I'm only saying that because I feel like the slope of the roof is perhaps more than it needs to be. And I think they could bring it down a foot or two. I also am a little disappointed by the width of the sidewalk, given the sidewalk width on the other side of the street. And, you know, again, it's all massing. If we could just push a little bit more, that would be ideal. But I think in general, the overall character does fit the neighborhood very well. And they've broken the mass as well. I'm actually a proponent of adding the other brick piece at the end and the chimney. I think it adds character. I think they've done a good job of bringing that all together.
Other members, please.
Bonnie, this is Tanya.
Sure.
Um, I think that this isn't the architectural style that I necessarily would would choose. I don't, as I've said before, I'm not a huge proponent of a commercial building looking residential. But I do see that that they've listened to some of the comments of making it fit into the neighborhood. Getting, just on the setback issue, I or comment that's come up. I do think that it actually fits, the setback in this neighborhood is our setbacks. And I think that when you look at some of the other homes, it actually matches the setbacks that are there in the existing homes. And in some ways, if you pulled it back, it might might look odd. That said, I do understand that Mark Griffin and his wife on several occasions have talked about the setback. Has the the property owner on Prospect. And I wonder if there's a way that there could be, and I know that there were some mature trees that were back there that are going to be that are going to be taken away and whether that's been looked at and somehow preserving that and seeing if there's some way to alleviate the neighbors' concerns there. I think that the height, you know, in the massing, I understand that there are concerns. I think there'd be concerns if there were, quite frankly, if there's any size building on this lot. And from a zoning perspective, this is still under the requirements for this area. And I do believe that the bank, you know, does have property rights to build on this property. And I think we have to be respectful of that. I wish that we could come to some some conclusion or some resolution with the neighbors to so that so that there could be something, some compromise made. But but I'm not sure that the bank's going to be able to get there. So I think that we're going to have to just look at the comments and sort of make, you know, sort of make our best judgment based on what we've seen. And I guess the last thing is I just, I would just hope that the noise of the systems, I know that's come up a few times. And I believe that that the bank has taken notice of that. But I would just like that to be addressed in some way, either if it hasn't, but just I know it's been coming up that that noise will actually be loss of the systems based on the state of the line. So that's my only comments.
Next, please. Are the rest of you holding off for some reason in particular, or you just don't have anything more to say?
Well, I would like to add to my other comments that there was the comment about the new building being subordinate to the original bank. I would just like to add that I think this, because it is so far back from State Street and because its character and its general look is so distinct from the original bank, I think it feels very subordinate to it. And the fact that it might be a little bit taller and volumetrically a little bit larger to me is 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 negligible because because of those other reasons.
Leah, I would agree. This is Tanya. I would agree with you, and I actually meant to mention that as well.
I would also add one more thing. Mark Griffin did say that he felt that at least some of the landscape screening at that in the proximity of his home and Otis Street could be put back. And I think I would like the bank to listen to that and find some way to to grant that that request.
Okay, I'm going to assume the rest of the board members don't want to speak unless you.
I'll go ahead, Bonnie. I have a quick comments. Sorry. Um, so I just had a comment about the multiple roof lines. I understand that it helps break up the building. But I do wonder if all of the angles look a little too complicated. And I think it's probably a function of, you know, filling the complete lot and trying to take up as much of the space that's available there. But I'm having a hard time envisioning how all of the roof angles come together and don't look sort of busy and jarring a little bit. I still do have concerns about the scale and size. Am I, do I sound funny?
Yeah, you're you're sort of, there's a little bit of vibration.
Okay.
But not. It's irregular.
Um, so yes, I do still have concerns about it. Now I can hear it, fitting in with the size and the scale of both the neighborhood and the historic building. I drove past today and I do feel like it still has the potential to dwarf the historical building when looking at it from the side and other angles. I'm not sure if, just looking at it from the front, you would know what's going on back there. But I do think as you go a little further back, it really has the potential to be this massive addition on what is, you know, a rather small building. I think the window spacing somehow makes the Prospect Street side look fairly massive. I don't know if that's the blank spaces in between the windows that have that effect for me. But I don't know if there's a way to alter that. And then I agree, the pitch of the roof line maybe could be looked at as something to reduce the height. I wondered if there is sufficient handicap parking. I think I asked that at some point in the past. I'm not sure what the requirements are and whether the lifts that are going to be used have any potential for providing handicap parking. I too would urge the bank to have some vegetation screening from Mark Griffin's property. I wasn't sure about the traffic flow in the parking lot. I heard some people say that all the traffic would be from State Street. But I'm not sure that that's the case. So if someone could explain that, that would be helpful. Also, how the teller is going to work and how I feel like if people can take a right out onto Prospect, but they're and they're exiting before the entrance, that that could get a little complicated. And then I wondered about the sound from the lift. I think we've maybe mentioned this before, but it does seem that it is very close to the Otis Street and Garden Street properties. And it's that, I think there are windows back there. I'm just wondering if there's any soundproofing and how loud those lifts will be.
Okay, you had a whole bunch of questions, and I'd like the applicant to respond to them. The roof lines might be an opportunity for them to show us the model from different angles to try to address your concerns. And in particular, the traffic, I think you've misheard that and they need to review that or we've misheard it. The traffic flow on site and anything else that you've picked up from what Beth was concerned about, I'd like the applicant to respond to.
And Shrey, feel free to grab the model from your end if you'd like to display that.
Okay.
So while Shrey is doing that, Madam Chair, I'm going to address, I want to address the sound issue for a moment. So there's an interesting thing happening. We sound vibrational and I see Anne Gardner's name pop up on the screen. So I'm not sure. There's some interference happening with her computer. So the garage lifts are entirely inside the garage now and will not be heard from the outside. If you are inside the garage, the lifts are at the decibel of a garage door opener, an electric garage door. And the, so because we've now added the space on Prospect Street and on Otis Place, they won't be heard and they are entirely enclosed along the sidewalk in the back. They won't be heard outside of the building. They, they are at the decibel of a garage door opener inside the building if you're standing right beside them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christopher, and he can talk about some of the angles and also the traffic flow related to folks coming and going into the garage versus waiting in line for the teller.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Yeah, hard to know where to start. I'm going to tag on to Lucy just for a moment. I mean, specifically, the plan was changed to add this buffer zone at Prospect Street side to 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 address any possible noise that would happen with with the with the machines that would happen. And given given the decimal levels that we're talking about, it's it's, you're not going to hear them from from the street at all, even if you're walking right next to the building. The angles are generated by being as contextual as possible. So you can see the Prospect Street side we're showing here. It actually is starting to mimic the directly perpendicular, the facades being absolutely parallel to the curb line, just like the other buildings along Prospect Street. So the contact context there is to is to speak the language of the buildings that are on Prospect Street. As the angles, as the angle of, if you, Shrey, can you move to garden, the garden prospect? Yeah, I'm sorry, Prospect Otis, so tab eight. Um, I, this, that section here is again picking up on the context of the houses that are moving down Otis Street, which tend to not be as rigorous of being parallel to the curb line. So again, as we turn onto Otis Place, there's a, there's a lot of more kind of urban texture that's going on on that street. And how our building meets the meets the curb line is trying to pick up on that kind of richness. And we would, you know, we really think it's quite rich. I mean, both streets are very rich in their in their, their kind of urbanness. And our building is trying to be as sensitive to Otis Place as it is to Prospect Street. The fact that there's a lot of the, I'm sorry?
It was other inter interruption. Go ahead.
Okay. You know, the roof lines are, the roof lines themselves are quite are quite kind of platonically simple. There's, there's nothing kind of contemporary about the roof lines themselves. They're they're very simple shed gables. There is one flat roof. Here at the corner, there's another flat roof at the brick mass that attaches to the 80s building. Again, it's mimicking the kind of simplicity and almost like traditionalism of the other roof pitches in the neighborhood. And I think taken as a whole, all these different masses clustered together to feel like a neighborhood. And so, yes, it's more complex than just one single building with one single roof line. And I that that is perfectly by intent in in trying to address the scale issues of this building. Trying to remember some of the, oh, let's talk about the traffic flow. Maybe we could just hover above that, Shrey. The traffic flow as designed, in this, this is a direct outflow from us. If you remember the previous submission, there was a in, there was an indoor and then there was an outdoor. And the indoor was off the circle and the outdoor was onto Prospect Street. And again, in And again, in us hearing and listening to the neighbors, it did not seem the right thing to do to continue having the door the outdoor on Prospect Street, which which, you know, giving views and noise into this garage. And so we really worked hard to come up with a one eight, one way in, one way out scheme. And to make that scheme work, we need, we need to modify the traffic circle slightly. And so how this traffic circle would work is that on the far left on the curb edge is where cars would queue for the ATM or for the teller window. And we've provided a room there for three to four cars to queue and leave a space.
Okay, so what is it? I'm sorry, Ann is having a little trouble and you're hearing her now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should I keep going?
Yes, please do. She's trying to get logged in.
No problem. The there would be road markings, there'd be markings on the ground that would that would have people not wait in that area in the in the rare occasion that that someone would be coming in and out of that garage. Now, we've done our own study to know that when people are coming in and out of that garage is not a time when people are usually queuing up for this. So there is, there is little worry that there's going to be cars interfering with each other. How people get in and out of the circle is how people would get in and out of the circle today. There would be no difference there. So, you you know, could people come out here and take a right on the prospect? If that's legal today, that's legal, that would be legal and that would be allowed in in this scheme as well. If people want to drive out towards the straight seats that State Street side, that is also that is also available to them. So I I would say that the measure of what we've done here is the traffic in and out of the circle is the same as as it is today. With 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 the addition of a a way of getting by any cars being queued up at the at the ATM or at the teller teller window.
Is that, may I stop you right there? I thought you said this curb cut was closed in your first presentation tonight.
No, Madam Chair, I did not say that.
So we we removed a curb cut from a previous, from a previous submission. There was a curb cut further down Prospect Street in a previous submission that we've removed.
But you're keeping this one?
This one is existing and will stay and will not be modified.
There's no consideration of closing this off in order to address the issues of additional congestion on Prospect Street?
But Madam Chair, the the, what the proposal originally was that people would enter this way, go into the building and then exit onto Prospect Street. We are take down further and so there would be only one, one way to be able to go and that would be down Prospect or up Otis. And we took that away. We took the garage door in the middle of the neighborhood with that exit away. And so the way people, the people use the bank parking lot in the bank today are the way people are going to use the bank parking lot and the bank after this proposal. So, no, we did not consider shutting down this ingress and egress because it's what is in use today and it will be the same as it is after the proposal if this were to be approved.
Well, my question still stands. If it would ameliorate some of the traffic congestion in the neighborhood, could the bank, would the traffic flow work for the bank if this this curb cut were closed?
The the answer I'm hearing from my client is no, because of the, because of the customers using the drive up teller. So the and so the, it would, it would not be good for that to occur, no.
But it's not inconceivable?
No, I I think the answer is no, it hasn't been considered and it's not at all, I don't think it's possible at this point.
I would add that to the list of things that at least I personally would like to see looked at and described why it can't work. Because I think that would go a long way to keeping traffic off of Prospect Street. Bank traffic off of Prospect Street. And that's about all I can see that might help the neighbors in terms of additional traffic there. If we can cut it back from where it is today, just because it's there today doesn't mean it should stay for tomorrow. If we can cut it back from today, that would be ideal. In fact, it would give a little more on-street parking for the neighbors who don't have off-street parking.
Madam Chair, I I think that what we'll do is show you the negligible impact out of this out of this egress onto egress out of Prospect Street. And we'll get back.
Okay. Beth, I had asked in particular for all your comments that they respond. Do you have anything outstanding that you'd like to hear more from and on any of those topics?
I think Lisa, you did answer a bit about the noise at the back of the property from the lifts, but there was a lot of discussion about you created space on the Prospect Street and the Otis Street sides to deal with any noise issues. I'm just curious why there how the noise is going to impact, you know, it's very close to Mark Griffin's house. And I'm not sure what the width of that walkway is and if there's any soundproofing in the windows or I guess, I don't know if it's clapboard or brick back there. But just if you could speak a little more to that. And then just one thing that I had meant to ask is a lot of the comments were about the, what things are going to look like in the model with when you add the parked cars. And I just did want to request if some parked cars could be added to the images so that we can see the impact on how the building looks.
So I I want to, I guess I have a couple of things. So the entire back of the building is now enclosed. I'll let Christopher address the materials issue. So at one point, we had all of those openings open. And so now the building is entirely enclosed, the parking is entirely enclosed and the the lifts will not be able to be heard outside of the building. Again, if you're standing right beside the lifts, they are at the noise of a garage door opener. So you will not be able to hear them outside of the building. Additionally, and I think this is really, really important, there is a generator that sits outside right now in the middle of the neighborhood that has to be run with some frequency and certainly when there's no electricity. That is now entirely enclosed in soundproof, in a soundproof room. So that will no longer be outside. Our original proposal and even the last proposal we had had that generator outside. It is now fully enclosed. So that won't be able to be heard. And I would like a clarification if I could, Ms. Delisle. I'm not sure what you mean by the parked cars.
People have discussed, people have mentioned that they feel that with the size, that if you were to add cars parked on the street, which is the case most of the time, that it would be more of a tunnel effect and that it would, I I believe it would give a better idea if you add parked cars to the model on the side of the street that you could get a, we could get a better feel of how this will actually look.
Okay, so you want cars parked on Prospect Street added to the model?
Yes, please.
Okay, and also, let let me also add, you had a question about handicap parking. We meet the handicap parking requirements and so that's that's accommodated before.
So the one space in the current parking lot is sufficient to meet the needs or?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm I'm just dwelling on the garage door thing because, I mean, I know if you're in a house, I don't have a garage or garage door openers, but I have been in houses where a couple rooms away, you can still hear the garage door open. And so I'm just wondering you know, is that really going to be confined to the walls of the building?
So the answer is yes, and I'll have Christopher address the issues with regard to the materials in the rear of the building.
Now, the the back, the back, the back facade of the building is completely opaque. It it looks to have windows in it, but that's for aesthetic purposes only. Those windows are actually a a full opaque wall that's fully insulated for acoustic purposes. This will be a a a wall that's probably better, better both acoustic and and thermal performing than 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 any residential wall for sure. So the, I think we are very sure that we're not going to hear these lifts, you know, to to the same point. If if we're not going to hear that generator, we're not going to hear these lifts. So I think, I think that point is is there's a lot of, I think we have solved that issue and I think we can say that with a lot of confidence. I I would also say when it comes to acoustics, the the adding of the the people occupied space in the first floor was not to solve acoustical issues. We could solve that with a single wall. That was a, that was a, we solved multiple design issues with that addition to the plan. Most of it was to make sure that that there was a kind of dynamic lively nature to the street once this project was 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 built, that that this is not a dead facade. When you do that, you get a lot of benefits from that. You get, you get the benefits of acoustics, you get the benefits of of, you know, not having light egress from a garage. So that that was, I wanted to make sure that we understand that, that we don't need to do the same thing on the other side to accomplish the acoustics. The acoustics is accomplished anyway. Did we answer all your questions? All right. So it was a long list. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I did my question about the window spacing or just a comment.
The window spacing is is a function of scale, right? The, first of all, the window height on the ground floor needs to be one that feels very human and very, like when you're walking by it, it makes sense. Of course, that's occupied space. So the sills need to be at a reasonable sill on the inside. The upper windows are at an office desk height. That makes a lot of sense. I think where there has been a lot of discussion and where we tried very hard to mitigate is the space in between the two windows vertically. That's a function of the 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 lower garage having to accommodate. We can go back to our section to show that, having to accommodate the lift. But, you know, I I could only give you my subjective opinion that as a composition, a facade composition that that this, it is in scale and in character with the with the neighborhood, even though, you know, one could argue you would never have two windows that far apart. Not never, but typically wouldn't build a house like that because you don't have to park cars in the bottom of it. So I I think that's my subjective opinion and, you know, I think I think what you have to do is trust your eyes looking down the street to see if it fits in the character.
Okay, so thank you very much, Beth and applicant spokespeople. We've got what we need for her. Let's move on to any other board members who would like to comment.
Bonnie, this is Ann on the phone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Ann.
I shouldn't have gotten that new computer. I'm so sorry about that. I I guess my comment is a very simple one. Tonight is the end of of public comment. And we've heard from the neighborhood for many, many months now. And they've pretty much said the same thing. And it's not just design, it's scale, massing, setback. I think like other board members, I think the architectural design that was presented was very, very well done and and what a great effort to incorporate you know, commercial use with a residential appearance. I think the concern from the neighborhood is still, it's just too big. So I guess my question, you know, for the applicant is, you know, have you or would you consider a smaller scale? I think, you know, when I look at our responsibility in this application under special permit criteria, I I'm not convinced that the project as it stands will not impair the integrity of that neighborhood. And, you know, architects and designers can say what will integrate a neighborhood, but I think it's the people who live in the neighborhood that can tell you how the integrity will feel. So I just think from day one, it's what neighbors have been asking. And I think bottom line, we've seen nothing smaller. I don't know how to evaluate the need for all that space to add seven employees. In fact, it doesn't really make sense to me. But my question for the applicant is, would you consider shrinking to really address what the people in the neighborhood have said? And, you know, if, well, I guess that's it. That's my comment. And I also would like to hear what the Historic Commission has to say.
Attorney Mead, would you, would you like to respond to that or hold on to it till you've heard from everyone and speak later about it?
Um, I I think that I'll hold off and and wait and hear from the the rest of the members. And I certainly appreciate Ann's comments, but I think that the the bank is trying to accomplish a number of things here and has gone to great lengths to to do so. And but we will, we can address it later after we hear the rest of the comments.
Fine. Other board members want to speak at this time?
Yeah, Bonnie, this is Don. I'd like to ask Andy because I have some issues with my audio.
Excuse me, Don, you're breaking up. Is there anything you can do to?
Yes, I, yes, yes, I was going to continue. I was going to say, Andy, would you please do me a favor and activate the telephone with three three six, the last three digits, because I've also got my telephone on and that's how I'm going to be talking now.
Sure. Don, let us know if that works for you.
Thank you. I believe you all can hear me now.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect technology. Several things with respect to asking the applicant of some items. I I would like to have a direct comparison of the Eave height and the ridge line for the the proposed addition as well as the two houses directly across from the bank as measured by the center line longitudinally or in in the direction of the prospect. In other words, I don't want you to take the 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 least the 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 house that has the least amount of height nor necessarily should you take the the highest one. But if you take something in the middle, I I think that would be, and I like to understand those two differences because candidly, when I take a look at your, at least from your 3D interactive models, it seems to me that the slope of this roof is almost identical to the ones on the opposite side of Prospect. And I know there's been some comments on that, so I'm just trying to understand that because to me, they seem very similar. And because of that, at least when it comes to the slope of the at least on Prospect, it seems very compatible with the neighborhood. The the second thing I would ask is with respect to the sidewalk on Prospect, if you can let me know what would be the dimension of this, of of the sidewalk width on Prospect as well as as well as the sidewalk on the other side of, of the proposed addition, to see what that is. Because, you know, I've, I've, like many of us, we've all been down Prospect. And candidly, like many roads or streets in South End, you do have a tunneling effect when you have a very long road. So I continue on that tunneling effect. When you do put in the, the automobiles, as been, has, has been suggested by some of the other planning board members, I would suggest that you just put, besides putting automobiles, cars just near the addition, you know, please put them down the rest of the street, whether someone goes and takes some pictures a couple of times, you know, some, you know, different times of the day or different days of the week. But let's, if we're going to do it, let's make it really representative, representative of what's there. Not only right by, by this addition, but also further down the road, in my opinion. On this interactive, by the way, kudos. This is myself as well as some of the others for this project as well. Other major projects have been asking for this type of interactive transparent modeling. So I want to provide kudos to the applicant and the design team on that. With respect to the, there's, there's been something for noise, just to let, uh, everyone know. There is going to be a, an exhaust stack. When you have a generator, there's going to be something to the outside. It's never completely enclosed. And of course, we'll eventually, when the engineers design all this, they'll need to be sure they put what certain silences on there. And again, as long as the criterion is met, is, uh, that the noise meets our city ordinance, then, uh, I would think that meets the standard. If some of the towns, if some, some of the butters are looking for a standard more stringent than our ordinance, we should, you should let us know that sooner as compared to later. I think those are the comments right now, Bonnie. Thanks.
Okay. So everything, just to clarify, everything you asked for would be additions to the images they've provided so far? Or was there something you felt that they could answer you directly right now?
I don't mean answers right now, but the other, the other, that's such a great point. The other items were, was, was with respect to the ridge line and the, uh, the eve and, and the ridge and the width of the sidewalks. That they need, they, they may need to do some calculations there. And again, this kind of, this, this.
So, um, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Don, had you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Attorney Mead.
Uh, Madam Chair, we can, sure, um, we can actually address almost all of those except for the exact width of the sidewalk, which we want to, I don't want to misrepresent. I want to make sure that we have it, um, correct on both sides. Um, I'm going to quickly address the fact that if you look at this image right here, Mr. Walters, you can see the stack, uh, that rises, the exhaust pipe that rises above, uh, the generator room, um, right there. So we've shown it. Um, we were very careful to show everything, um, the, that is going to come out of this roof on this image, on these images, so that there's no question about that. And so we actually did the mechanical engineering review ahead of time for that generator, um, to make sure that it was going to work. Uh, and that's what you have right there. So I think that Christopher can actually go through this model and address a number of the issues related to, um, the eve height and ridge and the slope of the roof, um, for the houses across Prospect Street and this. And as you could see in the, in the section, so the, the largest houses on Prospect Street, and now I'm going to turn it over to Christopher, uh, the largest houses on Prospect Street are three buildings, two of which are owned by Mr. Corales that he rents out. And if you stop right there for a second, Shreya, that would be the green, the blue and the pink building. They have, um, eve heights, okay, of 23.9. As we indicated before, Mr. Sullivan's building is the yellow, um, house right here. And I don't know that we have that height, but, um, Christopher might be able to address that. You'll see that that's directly across from the entryway porch. Uh, the eve height of the proposed structure is 25 feet. Um, and then Christopher, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can address, um, perhaps some of the other issues related to the roof pitch and whatever else you need appropriately.
Yeah, I would have to do that. Maybe Shreya, if we can just float up a little bit so that we can see the roof pitches. So I, I need to warn everyone a little bit that, you know, we, we, this is, we modeled this to the best of our ability. We did not get out there with tape measures and measure all the existing buildings. But this is the best our documentation for us, so we were pretty careful to do that. So one of your questions was about roof pitch and pitch in pitch, you know, what the pitch ratio is. I mean, the, the bigger houses across the street have much, have flatter pitches than we're proposing. The pitch we chose actually starts to relate more to a house that's perpendicular to Prospect as well as a number of the houses that are on, on Otis Place. And a, as you can see in any neighborhood, there is a, there is a, uh, there, there is multiple kind of pitches and that's what makes the neighborhoods rich. And so, you know, we are, uh, chose this pitch to, uh, we feel like speak the language of the neighborhood the best we could and not have to speak to any one individual house. And, uh, the ridge height, um, you know, when, when we talk about whether roof pitches can be adjusted, of course, they can, they can be adjusted. You know, we tried to pick a roof pitch that is, uh, very, uh, I would say most common in the era of, of, uh, residential housing that we're seeing around here. Again, I'm trying to make that connection to the, to the historical nature of the neighborhood. But that, that of course is something that is, is modifiable. While we're floating up here, um, like, uh, Representative Mead said, we, we are showing everything that you could possibly see on the roof. We've actually done the engineering on a number of these things. This is the, these are the things that will show up on the roof and the only things. So we have actually internalized a huge amount of mechanical equipment to keep these roof lines very clean, to keep these things from being seen from the public way.
So, um, Mr. Walters, we will, and Madam Chair, we will get back to you with, um, some of those numbers specifically that you asked for. Um, and certainly the, the width of the sidewalk on both sides of Prospect Street.
And I think you can see from the model, we, we absolutely want to get you the, the hard numbers. But you can see from the model that, that, you know, the widths clearly vary from house to house. They vary how far you come down in the street. And that's not any different than, than what's happening on, on our side of the street too. You know, where, where there is no building, the sidewalks are a certain width. And as we come to ours, uh, they, they start to, uh, they come right up to the property line, but they are, they are a, uh, a pretty typical width for a sidewalk.
Thank you.
Another board member who hasn't spoken yet, or someone with second thoughts after they have spoken, would like to speak now? All right, I'll, um, I'll make my comments. I think I'm with Ann on this. I think there's, um, got to be more responsiveness to the butters who have to live with the results of, um, our decision. And so I want to really take their concerns about massing and height and setback seriously. I'm not an architect. I'm not a designer. I don't know how you can deal with those issues. But look, just looking at it right now, this aerial view and how full that, um, back part of the parcel is. Yes, they have the right to build there. There's no question about it. And I agree with, I believe it was Tanya, maybe other board members have mentioned that as well. And, um, with the special permit criteria, there is the issue of compatibility. And while walking down one side of this, it's broken up with the architectural details. When you look at the whole piece of it, um, sure, it's never going to be as open as it was, as it is today. But I would feel more comfortable if there were a way for the applicant to pull back some of the buildings, um, lower the height on some of them, um, that aren't restricted by the garage being underneath or radically thinking, as I believe one of butters suggested, put another layer of, um, parking underground. I know that's a huge expense. But if that would make the significant difference in height that the neighbors could live with and that we as a planning board could, um, agree on, uh, for all the criteria that we have to look at, I think it would be the radical change that would be the long top term, um, opportunity to, um, allow these structures to fit better into the neighborhood. I can't tell you to do your job or what you should do to please the board, um, as a whole. But my personal comment is to find a way somehow to reduce the height and the, um, the feeling as one walks around this site of the massiveness of it. Other than that, um, I had a little concern about the view from Garden Street. I counted the windows in those buildings. There are seven. And each of the two buildings over there that make each of them much longer without any broken up space than any of the buildings on the other two sides of the project proposal. So I would ask you to consider a way to break up, um, that massing because while you showed us views between the buildings, I'm thinking about the people living in those buildings who look at one narrow view. And that narrow view could encompass, I don't know, five of those seven windows. And they're looking at a brick building or they're looking at a clavard building that is solid behind them. So I don't know if there's a way that you could do some of your architectural design magic to break that up for the residents who are looking at the Garden Street side of the addition. And that, those are my two major concerns. Would the applicant like to respond to that or anything else that the planning board has said at this time?
Well, I, I think, uh, Madam Chair, um, I think I'd like to respond to a couple of things and I, I'd like to have Christopher's take on it as well. So I think, Shreya, this is a good point. That you actually see three different buildings here. And the length of the wall is no different than, for instance, the length of that wall over there at, um, 11 to 13 and 15 to 17 Prospect Street. In fact, it's, um, shorter. It's a smaller breakup. So I think that, um, relative to this side of the, of the building, I, I think that it's not any different than what the neighborhood is. Um, and certainly it's close to the property line. Uh, but there are a number of houses in the neighborhood that are close to, um, the property line. I, I would also like to make a comment relative to how you experienced this building. You experience the building or buildings on the street. Nobody looks at the top of or an aerial view of a building as they experience it on a day-to-day basis. And so the massing and the scale are taken from the facades, the fenestrations, um, and the design of the building on the street. And I, I'm going to turn it over to Christopher here because, um, he's much more articulate at that than I.
Um, I think, I think it's things we've said, and this is why I urged us not to make too much of the aerial views. You look at anything from the, from the sky and it looks much bigger it is. So take for instance, the blue house that we see in the background here. It, it's well proportioned on its facade. It has a nice eve height. But if you float this view up, you see that this is a, that is a very big house. It looks like a single family home from one side, but it's actually a multifamily building that goes very deep into the site. That's, uh, that, that's as a warning to say, you know, when we, when we show these aerial views, we can trick ourselves to thinking how quote unquote massive something is. When, when the building is well broken down, we've now managed the scale. And I think, I think I will, you know, it, I think that that is something difficult to, to understand because you can't unsee it from the sky. But the, the amount of effort that's put into any building, including things that were built in 1871, to break down big buildings into smaller parts is exactly for that reason. And we are doing exactly that here. I think I wanted to address the, I, the concept of size. I, I, I think it needs to be understood by the board that the bank and its designers have considered size very carefully. The only way that we can accomplish these kinds of setbacks, these kinds of massing movements is that the occupiable usable space of this building has been drastically reduced to allow that to happen. So it, it, it's a little bit hard for us to hear that we haven't seen, we haven't made any changes to, to the fact that the, the, the neighborhood has asked us to make it smaller. When it's exactly what we did, we made the occupiable space of the upper floor smaller, which is why that upper floor plan is quite interesting, that this building pulls back all over the place. If you look at the previous submission, that was a large, that was one continuous footprint extruded up into two stories. That is not as what, what's happening in this proposition. And, and I think, I, I urge the board and everyone here listening is to understand that is us listening to the comments. It is smaller. And it's smaller to create this neighborhoodly feel. It is smaller to create this, uh, building that fits within the character of the neighborhood. So, you know, uh, that is what design magic is, is to push and pull the toothpaste in, into different parts of the tube to allow something to work. And that is exactly what we've, we've done here with this. And, um, so I hope we can hear that that's exactly what the, the bank has committed to is to reduce their, the, the, the program that they wish to do here to allow that to happen.
Excuse me, but isn't the overall square footage larger than the initial presentation?
I, I don't think it can be because we had to provide the same amount of, uh, square footage for the parking. We, we can't go over a certain.
Yeah, excuse me. So the usable square footage for office space and things of that nature is the same size. The, because of the, the pushes and the pulls, uh, and the, you know, the, 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 um, to be able to put the walkway, um, along Prospect Street, uh, and the entryways and things of that nature. Because of all of that, that has changed the, the way the layout exists and the usable square feet, uh, to not what the bank certainly originally proposed.
I guess I'm not sure how to measure that.
There's my can't, yeah, I mean, we're.
I, go ahead.
No, please. I'm sorry.
No, I just don't see a smaller building as, as I, you know, go through the, the program of it, if you will.
Right, the, so what I'm saying is that the bank has actually given up their programmatic space, the things that are used for program, the, the reason for their, for them designing this building in the first place, to give those spaces up to allow for the building to take the shape it's, it's in. The overall gross square footage is the same, but their actual usable space on their second floor that they plan to do their business is, is quite a bit smaller.
So what have they given up in program?
The space on the second.
They have office, they have conference, they have, what part of the program has been reduced? I, I don't get it.
The amount, the amount of square face, square, square footage that, that can be used for business program.
Okay. Well, maybe if you could quantify that for me, that would be helpful. What was the original usable versus now? I just, I, I don't feel that. I don't feel a smaller building. And, you know, I, I still don't feel the neighborhood was, was listened to. I think you've made design changes, which have been excellent, but that's not massing in size.
So, um, if I could, Ma-, uh, Ann, uh, a couple. So if I could, and a couple of things. So the, the design changes are masking scale. And for new construction, the criteria in the DOD relate to massing and scale, not size importantly. And neither do they, neither does size come up in the Secretary of the Interior Standards Guidelines. When you're talking about new construction in addition, it's the historic character and scale of the subject historic building structure or exterior feature. Not size. The word size isn't in there and there's a reason for that. So, so that I want to be clear about because I think there's been some confusion about that in the past. And I think that was one of my points that I wanted to make that Mr. Walters, Don pointed out earlier. The, the, and we will get you the exact numbers related to the.
I interrupt just for a sec. In the DOD criteria, I think size is.
If you look at 20, 27 F5C, you have to look at the new construction and additions section.
I, I, I appreciate that, Lisa. I'm just saying that size and massing can, in my interpretation, be related to the integrity of the character of the neighborhood. The, the existing residential historic neighborhood. That's, that's my only point. I agree with what you're saying.
Okay. So then, so then the other, the other part of this, I, thank you. I appreciate that. So here's the balance. It goes to the balance, right? Because of course this is a commercial property in a commercial district. All of those between Otis and Garden and the bank are all in a commercial district, right? So that's the balance that we have to make. But as to the usable space, I want to give you two examples. We will get you the numbers so that you have it. But if you go now to the first floor, we have the long, we have the entryway, the long hallway and the back conference room, right? So that space was originally on the second floor as open usable office based conference room, day to day operations. But in order to accomplish those things that Christopher has set forth, that space now, I think you would agree, even though we have to count it as occupable space, the hallway running along Prospect Street, other than providing very important architectural details and separation of the garage is not really a bank usable space. So those are the kinds of compromises that have taken place. I will, we will get you those breakdowns, however.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Just to reinforce what Beth was saying, I'm looking at the DOD section on new construction. It says, new construction and alteration within the DOD shall be compatible with the size, scale, height, color, accepting paint color, material and character of the subject historic building structure or exterior architectural feature. The lot where it's located and it's setting within the DOD as the case may be. So size is included.
If I could though, Madam Chair, you can't stop there. You have to continue. You have to continue on to section C under section 27 F5C.
Right. Non-historic styles.
Yep. Keep going.
Okay. Non-historic styles permitted for new construction and additions. The design of the, of new construction and additions as distinct from other alterations within the DOD may reflect non-historic styles so long as they remain compatible with the historic character and scale of the subject historic building, structure or exterior architectural feature. So long as new construction additions are compatible, the permit granting authority shall not require reproduction of historic styles and shall encourage contemporary styles. So the two sections have to be met, no?
So you have to read them together, but in light of the Secretary of the Interior guidelines that also talk about scale and not size. And that's because you talk about, as Mr. Walters suggested two weeks ago, that it's about the visual impact on the historic structure and the neighborhood, not just the size. And that's.
The size has an impact on the perception of the impact. The size, we're not just talking the actual, I think somebody used volumetric size. We're also looking at the look and feel of it in the neighborhood.
That's right.
Because that's where I'm coming from. I won't speak for Ann, but in my, my similar statement to hers about how, how large it feels in the neighborhood, especially for the houses that immediately abut either next to or across from any of this new structure. So while I'm willing to go, I absolutely agree with Don about seeing it so far away from the historic structure that I'm not as worried about that compatibility as I am with the immediate neighborhood and how it feels walking and driving by this new set of buildings.
I think, Madam Chair, that I think your point about walking and driving is really, really important. And so Shreya, if you could take us back over to Prospect Street. I think one of the things that Christopher and Shreya were very careful of is that the size of the run on the two sections, if you will, of the, with the gable ends and including this back corner. Those actual facades are shorter and smaller than the two buildings directly. Actually, there are three of them in a row. There's these two, the green, the, the blue, and then there's a pink one beside it. They're actually smaller than that. And they're actually skinnier, not as wide as, as those two buildings as well. So I think that we all have to be very careful about when we talk about the neighborhood, because the neighborhood is made up of a multitude of sizes of buildings. And, you know, that, that's exactly what Christopher and Shreya took into consideration when they looked at these. And I'm happy we will give these because we actually did all of this work. We looked at the size of these, the fronts of these buildings and the depth of these buildings when they designed the, these two gable ends in particular, and then the one down on Otis. So I understand that in particular, there is a house that is very close to this property. But the bank didn't build the house that close to the property line. And the bank is now attempting to do, to make, to enlarge its business on this property by providing additional space that it needs for its offices. And it is doing that very carefully in light of as many of the issues that can be addressed. And hopefully we can continue to have this conversation. But I, I would beg the board to look at all of the buildings in the neighborhood, not just one or two.
Are there any other comments from board members at this time? We've referenced the site plan review criteria and the DOD ones. Do you want, is there a board member or more that would like to go through those on the screen at this point? You certainly can review them in preparation for discussions at our next meeting to make sure that we cover all of them to your satisfaction. So.
Yes. I'll interrupt for one second. Can I just make a request for a particular view of just to go down in front of the entrance and exit? And just to sort of look left and look right, just to see what, I'm curious as to how it compares to the historic building. Yeah. If you can just kind of pan as if somebody was looking. Okay. And can you just go a little closer to the driveway? Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that view. And using this model has been very helpful. So I'm glad we've had access to it. Let me then ask Attorney Need for confirmation of a continuance date to November 4th. Will that give you enough time to deal with anything you hear from the historical commission and the comments we've made tonight?
So I'd like to continue, yes, to November 4th. And then, you know, we'll hear the historic commission tomorrow night and we'll go from there.
And you have the list of requests from, from planning board members to include in your responses on the, on the next meeting, right?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, you want to add anything else at this point? We should be sure to have them cover in the next meeting. All right. I'll take a motion to continue this public hearing. Let me just say one thing. We will also have public comment that night. There was remark, I thought I heard from one of the planning board members. It might've been interpreted as there would never, there would not be any more public comment. As long as the public hearing is open, we will take public comment. I may restrict it to what's being discussed at that particular meeting, but we will have public comment at our next meeting. All right. Could I have a motion to continue to November 4th, please?
I will make that.
Who was the first female voice?
That was Leah.
Leah. Okay. And the second was Don?
Yep.
Okay.
I thought you said who was the first female voice, meaning the second voice was also female.
I was trying to differentiate two things at the same time. I was being overly careful. Okay. So Leah made the motion. Don seconded. I will take roll call on, on the continuance. Alden?
I'll abstain.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. So this is now continued to November 4th. Thank you, everybody who has spoken and sat through this. And we will hopefully see and hear from you next time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Planning Board, we're continuing with our little bit of business that is still before us. We have 177, whoops. We have 177 State Street, a minor site plan review. I believe there is someone here on behalf of the applicant to explain it to us. And Andy is also going to be participating in this review. So Andy, how do you, who do you want to speak first?
Yep. I'll, I just want to preface, TJ Melvin is here for the applicant as well as Mark Griffin. I just wanted to give a preface to tonight's discussion, just to save everybody a bit of time. At least I think this particular application, we'll pull up the materials for, for the applicant to go over. The office is, just for a quick summary, the office doesn't see any remaining issues with this particular application from our typical review process, which is to check with other departments, see if there's any issues that we would identify with the plans that other departments would. All those issues have generally been addressed. Much of this project is actually across the town line. There's actually a relatively small portion of it, as you'll see, that's in the city of Newburyport. But there is one issue that's been raised by the water department. So our suggestion is at least to continue this hearing from tonight to a future date to allow the applicant to follow up with the water department. I did have a conversation with a gentleman from our water department about his concern essentially about soil conditions on the site and the potential for any of those contaminants to make its way into the city's water supply. Granted, obviously these are, we're talking about closed pipes, but he did have some concerns that that might still be a risk. So I'll, I'll defer to them on that discussion and obviously we'd want, we'd want to report back to you. But my suggestion, I think, is a brief overview of the project by the applicant. We can speak to the reviews that have been done. Like I said, there's nothing that's outstanding. I think that we're aware of with any city departments or stormwater and whatnot. However, we do want to try to see that this issue gets resolved so that the water department is satisfied that there's not a risk to their system or their water distribution system or anyone else as a result of any VOCs or anything else from the site making its way into the water line. So with that, I would pass it to TJ Melvin and Mark Griffin if they wanted to speak application materials.
Thank you, Andy. My name's TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. As Andy stated, the majority of this project is actually in Newbury. Brief overview, it's a mixed use retail residential building. We have some portion of the parking underneath one end of the building. As far as the work in Newburyport, as you can see on that cover sheet that's up there now, it's just that top triangle. So we do have the exit of the site would be, would fall in there. And we have four parking spaces as well as some minor site grading. The, the four parking spaces actually generally fall within what is already paved today. And then the remainder of the site is, has all been disturbed up to the tree line to the east of the site. As Andy mentioned, there are some concerns with the hazardous materials on site. The previous owner's circle finishing had a licensed site professional perform a evaluation of the site. And our client, who was also the applicant, is in the process of hiring his own LSP to also to help address any further issues with that. And as Andy mentioned, the water and sewer are, are both going to be connected to the Newburyport services. It's all the stormwater for the site drains back towards, or at least from the paved surfaces drains back towards Newbury and is collected into the infiltration basin to the east. And I can, I can answer any other specific questions the board may have. That's just a brief overview of what we're proposing to do.
Attorney Griffin, did you want to speak?
He may not still be on. I wasn't sure if he was going to be part of this. He said that he wasn't planning on, so he may not be available.
All right. Planning Board members, any questions?
Bonnie, this is Tanya.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Did you say that the town of Newbury hasn't approved this?
No, we have not been in front of the planning board to this point.
Okay. And, and this is more, I guess, a question for Andy. Do we have any, you know, I, I read the environmental report. I'm, I'm actually not concerned. And environmental conditions are regulated by DEP. Do we have any authority to hold up the review of this project because of environmental? I mean, because that's regulated under a different jurisdiction?
Yeah. And sorry, thank you. It's, it's a good point. And to be clear, I, my suggestion is not that the planning board approval will be withheld or anything. Just that we allow time for the applicant to respond back to the technical concern that was raised by the water division, which was that somehow the VOCs or any other contaminants, again, that's not my every expertise, would somehow make its way into the water's distribution system. You know, because there are, even though an LSP might be overseeing the construction work, this gentleman, John, still seemed to think that there was potentially some risk while, during the life span of the use of the property for something, you know, maybe if a pipe gets damaged or whatnot, that there could be infiltration of those contaminants into the water line. So it's, it's not that we think necessarily this project would be upheld, but more a question of if there are any special conditions that would be appropriate to add by the planning board to this project rather than solely relying on DEP for that. So we thought their response that gave from an LSP or if there's a follow from DP to clarify that they, you know, again, that they have jurisdiction, that they don't see any issues here. There was a similar. There was a similar type of comment that was given with respect to the landfill some time ago. A similar sort of communication from DEP that was sufficient to satisfy officials. So again, we're just suggesting a postponement of any kind of action by the board. We wanted to, at least from the office's perspective, we don't have any objections to the project. We just wanted to make sure that the board could identify any remaining issues, if any, tonight, and we just wanted to give time for the Water Department to get a reasonably satisfactory answer to how the water supply would be protected, which is a city utility that falls underneath site plan review as far as the plan approval goes.
Okay, I would just hesitate, I would, it's, I don't want to hold up the applicant because again, in reviewing the report, it didn't look like there was any any issues. It looked like the LSP that did the
Yeah, and I'd actually, to address your concern, I'd actually reached out to the Water Division to try to see if there was any way that we could in advance of this meeting propose a special condition that would address that concern. Caitlin and I had reached out to John at the Water Division to talk about this a little bit. But the concern that he had was actually less about construction, which I think might have been easy for us to draft a condition that would say something along the lines of what state law requires, which is that a licensed site professional needs to oversee any of the soil work and the remediation. You know, any utilities are being put in to make sure that any soil that's, you know, impacted is addressed. The issue that, the problem that we ran into was that it wasn't clear what type of condition might be appropriate, if any, because the concern that was raised was actually about the lifespan of the project, not necessarily initial construction. And that wasn't clear to us how we might be able to address that without further follow-up.
Yeah, I guess, very like environmental insurance, but um, anyway, it just, I just, it just seems so minor and I just, I always hate to have applicants have to come back when it's, when again, it's something that's outside of our jurisdiction. Otherwise, I don't have any other problems with this project.
Yeah, and can I just, I should have looked it up on the map, but where were the high levels of VOCs? Where were the wells that they found us in?
So the original building, I believe, was similar in the location to where it is now. In talking with the LSP, the highest areas of concern that would still remain on the site would be the actual wetland itself. Then the report also states that there's no significant risk to health or human safety. It is just an ecological risk, at least based on what he was saying. He did mention that the northern third of the site essentially wasn't affected. Really, the biggest issue was once the building burned down, the runoff from the firewater kind of just pushed all the materials even more across the site. So the actual portion in Newburyport, he felt may have zero contamination.
Right, okay. And the concern, Andy, is that they would be running, so Newburyport would be providing the sewer and water? And the concern would be that it would get into the
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's just like occasionally these issues come up with Plum Island where we're providing water service. So yes, their concern is essentially that because it would be the city of Newburyport's water main or water line coming to serve in the in the site, they wanted to make sure that there was, and I said, you know, is there some sort of backflow prevent, you know, sort of technique that can be used? If in fact, you know, VOCs or something else could get into the water line itself, he didn't seem to have an answer per se. So we thought, you know, again, we'd try to give some opportunity for the applicant to reach out to them, we'll participate in the conversation, of course. They couldn't recall another project that either, either of the two folks at the Water Division had worked at, in committees they've worked in before in which there was a contaminated site that they had approved water lines going into and not raise, you know, not had an issue like this or a concern like this. So, you know, we, it sounds like they just need a little bit more time to close this loop with the applicant, but you know, my initial inclination was to think that this was just a construction period issue of making sure that the water lines are put in and that there isn't contamination that is, you know, that isn't handled properly or that, you know, makes its way into the pipes, but again, their concern was somehow that even through the pipes themselves, some of these things might be able to migrate. I can't speak to that issue or not, but that was, seems to be part of their concern.
Right. It sounds like maybe the, I mean, just the Water Department might want to also participate in whatever permitting is gonna happen in Newbury, since that seems like the more relevant piece of the property, but.
Yeah, we figured we would, we're actually planning on passing on, Caitlin and I will pass some of her comments. We get to Martha Taylor, the planner over there, so that they can share that with their board for consideration as well and I don't know whether it's a question of, you know, some sort of extra coating on the pipes or something, but you know, that's a question mark. It's the only question mark we have with this application as far as the office is concerned.
Yeah, I think typically there'd be coating or venting or there are measures that they can probably require or ask for. So, just a thought that does seem more relevant to the Newbury piece of the project.
Anyone else want to comment on it or have a question?
Hi, yeah, this is Alden. I just had a question. It may not, it may not be material to us as, there's only the four parking spaces in Newburyport, but I just see that the, the plan says that there's 34 parking spaces in their narrative, but I only see 32 on the, on the drawings that are presented. I just wondered if if I'm looking at something incorrectly as far as the parking designated.
It could have just been a typo in the narrative. What's that? I can try to hold up and just reconfirm.
I see on the plan, there's a little 10 in the circle in front of the building on the diagonal parking spaces. I don't know if that's meant to count the parking spaces.
Yes, it is. So pretty much that number just intended to count whatever's in that row or cluster.
Yeah, there's only eight on the drawing and where it says 10. But if that's, but if in reality there's 10 there, then maybe the count is correct.
Yeah, I do agree with Alden's count there.
All right, well, that's going to apply to the Newbury application anyway. It's good to point it out and I'm sure they can fix it if it's been a typo. Anything else?
No, that was it for me.
Okay, yes.
I guess the only thing I was mentioning, I was thinking about and looking at this is with the exit onto Route 1 there, I know down the road that they're planning on making some changes to Route 1 and so forth. I don't know if we have any concerns. I guess I don't really have any concerns. I just wonder if they've thought about that in, in, in doing their design.
I can speak to the MASTOT portion at least. This is Andy. I can speak to that. Jordy Vining and I from the Planning Office have been in communication primarily with MASTOT about this issue of the roundabout, the rotary being reconfigured. There's not enough money right now in a bigger project to redesign it in a wholesale way. But MASTOT is trying to roll into a repaving project they're working on this next year. Some improvements that would allow for a horizontal or east-west kind of crossing of the Route 1 traffic circle further up, essentially where the, the auto rental facility is along essentially the old Parker Street section, past the new renovated restaurant and then crossing over to to reach the old, the new Parker Street section where a sort of bike path with sidewalk of 10 feet has been put in. So there isn't any plan right now for the, you know, short or long term that we're aware of that would result in any kind of pedestrian access. You know, along the frontage down this far, there are, it's always worth considering these types of things, but we're not aware of MASTOT planning anything that would line up there or provide access. They're only really looking at the northern section of the rotary itself for that right now.
Okay, yeah, just curious.
Okay, I see in the draft motion, Andy, that the staff have recommended continuance to December 16th. Is that still your recommendation?
I would, I have no problem continuing to the earliest possible date. Just the question is whether the applicant can circle back with the Water Division and we're happy to help with that discussion, but just kind of close that loop as soon as possible. To me, that's something that could be done in a, you know, week or two, but it's up to the applicant at this point.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I was talking at the same time. I was just gonna say, yeah, we'd like to continue to the, to the next possible hearing. We're actually in the process of obtaining or contracting with an LSP and hopefully we'll have that tomorrow. He did some initial review on the project and will hopefully help alleviate any concerns that the Watersuit Commission may have.
I'm looking at our agenda. We have a very large public hearing as we did tonight, the same one on the 4th, which is our next meeting. We already have two minor modifications and a minor site plan review for that night and all these little things add up. I would prefer to put you on the second meeting in November, which would be November 18th. That's a lot closer than December 16th. Is that, would that work for you?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, let's continue to November 18th. I'll take a motion.
So moved, Dan.
Anne makes the motion and a second?
A second, Alden.
Alden, okay, and I'll do a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya? Leah?
Yep.
Rick? Hello, Rick.
Rick's not on the screen.
He must have left. Okay, so we'll put a abstain on that one. MJ?
Yes.
Don? Is Don still with us?
Whoops. Yes, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we can. And Bonnie, yes. So we'll hopefully wrap this up on November 18th. Thank you for all the information.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. October 7th, could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alden?
A second, please?
I'll second.
Who's that, Don? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, I'm taking a roll call again. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
I wasn't here, so I'll abstain.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick? We'll put him in as abstain. MJ?
I abstain as well, I was not there.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So the minutes are approved. We have the short-term rental draft report to look at. I take it you've all looked at it. It's pretty much what we had discussed at the last meeting. Does anyone have any further comments on it before we approve it to send to the City Council? Andy, do you have any comments? Caitlin?
No, again, we were sort of in a holding pattern, assuming that the board would tonight, based on the hard work that Rick's done with you, Bonnie, is just finalize whether these comments are sufficient to summarize what the Planning Board's concerns or comments are for the zoning amendment. If not, any comments you might also have on the related licensing amendment. And then pass that on to the City Council for their consideration, because obviously they'll be doing a few more meetings of their own, excuse me, on the, on the two amendments.
Well, I think we're required to have a written report on the zoning amendment. As for licensing, those comments came up during the hearing, so I will leave them there. If any individual members want to, well, I'm gonna leave it because we can always attend the licensing meetings when they come along, but our formal position is this, this document. So I will take a motion to, what shall we do? Adopt this report as our official report. How's that?
Yes.
Sounds good, I'll move.
You're moving, huh? Don, and I hear Alden?
I'll second.
Alden's the second, and let's go for it. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
I need to abstain.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
And I really shouldn't be putting Rick down for abstain on all these things. I guess we have to say he's actually absent. And Linda, I hope you'll make a note of that when I earlier said that he had been abstaining.
I did.
I abstain as well.
You abstain. Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So Andy, you will take care of formalizing this on appropriate stationery and sending it to
Yes, yes, we'll come on to the council formally and, and obviously we'll keep you advised as any other meetings are having or follow-up, you might depending on your level of interest, you might want to track that. We'll obviously keep you updated and circle back with you on their outcome, but if you want to follow those discussions, they'll probably be posted as meetings on the city website. It's not clear what that timeframe will be right now.
You know what? I would appreciate it if Caitlin could let us know when they are scheduled, because we don't always know to look. And if she could just put that in her magic reminder folder. Once we get the, once the hearings start, then we can follow them, but to let us know when the first, because it's gonna be licensing, I'm not
Sure, we're both
We will find out about it from planning and development. I've asked Heather to let me know, but you know, that's putting a lot on her to remember. So I think it's our responsibility to find out when the first licensing public hearing is being held.
Sure, yeah, Caitlin and I will both take responsibility for circling back with you and letting you know when they're doing any committee meetings on this.
Okay, good. And the last one is yours as well, discussion of public comment emails to board members. You wanted to ask our opinion on that.
Yes, thank you. So the mayor had a suggestion a couple of weeks ago when we were looking into the technical aspects of how to make it work, but the general gist of it was, and I agreed with her general premise, was to try to see if we could use the city's website or some sort of automated process that we have using the existing technology the city has to make it feasible and more efficient for people in the general public who might be constituents, butters to projects and so forth. When they send comments to the board, to have them basically sent and distributed automatically directly to all the board members. We wanted to reach out to each of the board members through their regular meetings before implementing, you know, a change like that, how we do things. The Planning Board up until recently, even with the Institution for Savings, there's been a lot of packaging of the comments that have come in for various projects for the convenience of board members. We post them on the website so that the general public can see them as well. But the suggestion was part to save staff time of having to sort of, you know, act as relays in between, which then takes our time away from other tasks that need to be done. And partly trying to make sure that the general public could have the most convenient access to the board members that are ultimately making decisions. So our thinking was that we would have, if this, you know, we want your thoughts on this, but there would be essentially one email address for the board. And then folks from the general public could, you know, in addition, or rather than the usual process of sending it to staff and then asking us to forward it, they could send it directly to that email address. It might be, you know, planningboard@cityofnewreport.com. So with that, that email address would then copy, send a copy to all the board members email addresses so that you each have a copy of it, but there'd be that central repository for more communications the boards are getting from this sort of general public feedback. So we wanted your input on, and I know, you know, it's a question of, you know, how you want to get your emails. Do you want them sort of as they're coming in from people? Do you want them packaged or whatnot? I don't have any particular issue or objection to what was suggested. I think it's a nice, you know, it's a profitable alternative, in my opinion, to having staff, you know, spend extra time on relaying things. It makes more sense to have it go directly to members, but also have that, you know, retained copy. But, but it's a question of, you know, how board members feel about getting things sort of dispersed randomly from folks as they're able to submit comments versus the packaging we try to do at least, but even when we package them, as you know, when members of the public submit comments, you know, they do them at their, at their discretion, so they don't always come at the same time anyway. So just the thoughts that you have on that would be helpful to us so we can know what to implement.
Would they still be on the website?
That is one of the, unfortunately, right now, we're taking a look to see what we can do about it, but right now there isn't a way to automatically have our email system or the website automatically populate those comments to the website. We are checking in to see, that's another question, I know you're obvious question in terms of saving everybody time and making it as transparent as possible. So that is a follow-up question for us, but we don't have an answer to that, a technical solution to that yet, based on either the website configuration or the email configuration. So that is a follow-up question for us, but we don't have an answer to that, uh, technical solution to that yet, based on, um, either the website, uh, configuration or the email configuration.
I prefer.
So Andy, just.
Sorry. I would prefer to still have them packaged or to, I don't mind having them come in to me as they come in. But I, I know that the way that my email folds things up, I miss a lot of things. And so if there isn't one place that I can go to to make sure that I've seen all the comments, I don't know that I would.
Sure.
Feel comfortable that I've seen everything.
Okay.
Personal.
What I was just going to ask i- is, uh, with respect to compiling them and everyone can seize them, you put them on the website, that, that, that's, that's something that we do as a, uh, uh, an optional thing, there's not a legal requirement for us to post all other butters' comments, is that, or, or is it a requirement?
Uh, we, it's not a requirement and actually, um, you know, it's actually during my tenure here that we've, we've done our best to basically increase the amount of immediate, you know, transfer or posting of comments that we get from folks to the website as soon as we're able, um, you know, even before, you know, the, the package is sent out to you before meetings. Um, it, you know, normally or before that, we were really sending just the substantive materials given by the applicant. Um, you'd hear from members of the public and sometimes you get a written letter or whatnot. We've been trying to basically, um, post and, and, you know, distribute to you there on the website, any comments we're getting from the general public. Um, but we certainly have found in a couple of recent cases, um, that will get sort of bombarded by a bunch of different comments. And, um, because people do not always send that to one person only or to all the same people. Um, it's not clear, you know, that everybody's immediately getting a copy of those comments. So for instance, uh, Kayla might get copy, copying the comments from someone, but they don't copy me. Um, or they copy me, but then don't copy Caitlin or Diane, and so Diane's the one posted the website. So it's, it's just preferable that they all sort of come into one place, um, if they're gonna go to the board. Uh, we could still package them, of course, like that, and we can look to, um, a way to package it on the website automated, if that's feasible from the technical end. Um, we don't have a solution for that just yet, but, um, um, we're happy to, you know, adjust as the board needs, but we, we basically, it's not a statutory obligation to post all those, um, comments. We're trying to go out of our way to make it as transparent as possible what public comments have come in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't understand that, because I thought we were telling people that if you couldn't come to a public hearing or if you couldn't be, you couldn't zoom in when now, that your comments could be written to the board and they would go into the record. Well, I thought the record was a posting on the website. So you're saying we have some other way of, uh, including their comments?
Yeah.
Record?
Well, up until recently, uh, well, up until we started doing that with the website, trying to post comments as well as application submission materials. Typically, you might get a, you know, a written copy of a letter and that was put in your packet that was sent out. Um, and, and it's, it's been maybe a little bit of time since we've done that, but that's how you would get your comments and would be noted in the public record for the meeting that we got comments from so-and-so. Um, we're, it's, we're actually, this is a step in the, in the way of making it a little bit more transparent and more thorough in noting what is in the public record. Um, because when people are sending comments to various different city email addresses, you know, thinking they're getting this great staff person or, um, having one board member's email but not others, um, it becomes a little confusing. And it's better, I think, in general, for all board members to get a copy of whatever comments have come in. Um, so that's why I think it, it, in a bare minimum, if we were to set up one address for the board members, um, to receive comments from, that would make it at least consistent that everybody's getting the same, uh, comments, rather than the, what we sort of have right now is a mishmash of people sometimes sending it to one staff person, sometimes sending it to multiples, um, and, and sometimes sending it to the, you know, the chair, uh, but not all the board members. And, and so it's, um, it's a little erratic the way that the comments are coming in.
Well, I definitely don't want to be getting letters directly, uh, emails directly from the public. I don't know if I'm getting them because I'm the chair or, you know, other members are getting them as well. I think that's really inappropriate. Um, so back to, do I want emails sent to me randomly or in a package? I know it's more work for the staff, but I prefer just to know that they're on the website and that I can go there up to, you know, a half a day before the meeting and read all of the comments. So I'm gonna vote for more work for the staff, I'm sorry, to say, um, and have them packaged, uh, have them put on the website, period. I don't even need any of it sent to me, but except maybe a notification to say there are twenty-five new ones that just came in for this hearing you're having tomorrow night, but I don't want to have even have them sent to me.
Sure, and if that's.
So to me, it seems.
So I will continue to look into that option to, uh, automate the comments to the website, since that might, uh, address your concern there while also making sure the comments are happening more directly, so we'll take a look at that.
How do others feel?
What I was gonna say, it, it's, what I was gonna say, it seems to be that, that there's another issue that, that we tangentially discussed. And that is, should we have on our website, when you click on the planning board, a, an email address for planningboard@cityofnewreport.com? And perhaps one of the reasons yourself, Bonnie and Leah, or maybe others are getting these emails, because they go on there, they go, it's a planning board hearing. They don't see an email address and then they somehow find you guys. So independent of what we just said about compiling, I would think just even having a, a, a planning board address and, and even if access is still viewed by Andy, whatever, it may minimize you all getting some personal emails. But that's up to you, I don't get any, so it's just a suggestion for you all.
Well, I was, that kind of goes with what I was wondering is how everybody's gonna know that this is now how you communicate, whatever you decide to do. So, um, I like that idea and that it goes directly to Diane, for example, and she can, um, batch them and put them, uh, and post them. And just send us a note when there are a bunch of them there, just to remind us that there is some, um, public comment that we might want to be aware of before a given meeting and it's done.
Um, I would agree, I don't, I, I have a hard enough time following, um, what to look for when and, um, I find it frustrating sometimes to feel like I'm constantly going back and, and between emails. If I had, like, in particular with the Institute for Savings, this particular project, if I was getting emails on a regular basis, I would just shut down and wouldn't look at anything. And I'd probably quit the board, so, um, because I, I would be too overwhelmed with information, because I just couldn't, couldn't keep track of it. So I think it's just, there's just so much that I can kind of compile and gather, I think that would just be too much to be getting on a, on a regular basis. Understanding that not, not everything is like the Institute for Savings, but still, I like to be able to scroll through them, um, as one document.
Thank you, uh, is there any other feedback for us? Um, appreciate all the comments so far.
I would just agree with Tanya, I, I like to just be able to go on the site and scroll through and get it all done in one, one shot.
Okay, um, yeah, sorry, good.
Um, I do have a suggestion, um, separate from this, that staff could, could do, that would be really helpful, um, is, is I wonder and if, um, we could get an email sent to, like a calendar invite sent to us, um, you know, a week before the meeting or, you know, maybe a couple, the Friday before the meeting, um, that we can, that actually would go onto our calendar and that would have the link to the Zoom meeting, the presenter link. Um, I have to say that one of the frustrating parts, I know that I'm often running to these meetings late, but having to scroll through the email and then go to the website and then get on through the non-presenter and then, like today, there was probably twenty, twenty-five minutes where I wasn't. And I was, I was in web mode, and I know that, um, there's at least two other cities that I've interacted with professionally that, that, that's, when, when I'm a presenter at a planning board meeting, I get a calendar invite with a link to the, um, to the Zoom.
Yeah, um, sorry, just to be clear, the, um, some of that is, is doable, some of it's not, that, it just threw the waste of the way that we have it set up with Zoom. So, um, we can send out, uh, the same exact email invitation essentially that you got before, which is the, uh, panelist invitation. The, uh, access tonight via the general public side, and then we just promoted you to the panelist status. Um, but, um, the, if you just retain that one email, and I can resend that email to you right now if you want. Um, but if you just retain that email, it will, um, it'll always have the link for you. So we, the problem with trying to do that before every meeting, you know, again, if, if every member of various different boards or various ones, and, and it's not always consistent. Um, if, if members want that before the meeting, um, we would have to do an individual outlook invitation and have that, uh, panelist email, which technically from Zoom goes directly, but not to us. So we wouldn't even have the benefit of your panelist information in that email. The Zoom meetings you're referring to might be ones where everybody's just a, a regular meeting member. Um, but, um, you know, we could send out the meeting, the general public, uh, meeting link as a, a sort of outlook calendar invite or something like that. But, um, there isn't, uh, convenient or, uh, streamlined way for us to basically do every single board member, um, with a, uh, meeting invite with the panelists in, info, because that actually technically goes directly from Zoom to you when we enter your email address.
You can send it to me, but it's gonna be, I'm gonna then be running into the same issue. If, if it's, you're gonna have to just promote me every time, because I, I just won't, I, I, it's, it's too much. And if it's in, again, if it's in my calendar invite and I go to, you know, October.
If I.
You know, I get, I, it's a lot, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why other cities and towns have been able to do it and you guys can't, can't, can't do that, that's all.
Well, yeah, again, there may be some difference in the way that they're doing it or misunderstanding in, in the technical side of it. But if, if there's, if you want to just, I can resend the invitation now, if you just paste that into your own, whatever calendar system you're using, because not everybody uses Outlook, for instance, if you just paste that into whatever calendar dates that the planning board's meeting, you, you can always have that same information. It's just that it has to be the panelist email from the email that you've gotten, uh, that we don't actually have ourselves, because it's an email that goes directly to you.
Okay.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, not to beat a dead, uh, uh, a dead horse here, but, but actually, you don't even paste it, Andy. Once you put it on one, you can set up a recurring thing on the first and third Wednesday of the month, uh, or whatever, but.
Agreed.
You know, everyone knows how to do calendars, so that's what I've done, but, you know, whatever is easy for everyone.
Good. Okay, do I have a motion to?
Thanks, everybody, for your feedback.
You're welcome. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Alden.
A second?
A second, Leah?
Thank you. Uh, final roll call of the night, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick is absent. MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.